Good evening and welcome to the February 8th meeting of the Corte Madera Planning Commission. And Adam, will you please call the roll?
Sure, start with Commissioner Bundy.
Here.
Commissioner Rizzo.
Here.
Commissioner Metcalfe.
Here.
Commissioner Bendel.
Here.
Commissioner Chase.
Here. Thank you. So what we always do at the beginning of the meeting is to call for public comment for that which is not on tonight's agenda. So if you have something that you would like to comment on that we're not about to discuss tonight, please go ahead and raise your hand or send in an email to publiccomment@tcnmail.org. And we'll wait for you for a moment here to see if anyone pops a hand up or emails in a comment. Anything going on there Tracy?
No emails, Chair Chase, and I'm sure you can see too, no hands have been raised.
Okay, so that means we'll go ahead and close public comment for this meeting tonight. We'll move on to the consent calendar. There are two items on tonight's consent calendar. And one is the adopt a resolution that we have to adopt for continuing these public teleconference meetings. And the other is a permanent amendment application for modification to a previously approved design review application at 78 Granada Drive. So any member of the public or commissioner can pull an item for further discussion. So we have, there you go, Phyllis.
Yes, I would like to remove item B.
Okay, all right, so that said, we will vote on item A. I need a motion to approve item A on the consent calendar.
Move to approve item A.
Second.
Okay.
I'll take the roll on that. Commissioner, sorry, Commissioner Bundy.
Yes.
Commissioner Bendel.
Yes.
Commissioner Rizzo.
Yes.
Vice Chair Metcalfe.
Yes.
Chairman Chase.
Yes. So we can discuss this as I understand it now, but otherwise we move it over to a new hearing item. Right, is that what I understand we can do with this?
I think it's, it's, it's can be discussed and opened for public comment and sort of the normal deliberation you would do, but it's still under the consent calendar.
All right.
And then you would bring it back for a vote.
Right. So that said, I think we're all in receipt of the email where the neighbor to the applicant sent in their own photo and asked to change the, or asked to add to the resolution that we have in front of us tonight for this item.
So just to make sure, did everyone receive that email? Okay, good, thank you.
That's great.
Okay, so we have the option here of just accepting the resolution as it is and voting it for it. But let's have commissioners with any commentary bring it to the forefront. So who wants to start? Commissioner Bendel.
I just have had a question about how, how often, or I've never seen it happen that a picture is included with a resolution. Does that happen? Has it happened before?
No, I, I think the request, and Martha, maybe you can fill in, but I think that the request was actually just to add language to the resolution based on the additional evidence or the additional information conveyed by the photo, not that the actual photo is included as part of the resolution.
Okay, I, I had the wrong impression then, thank you.
So, Phyllis.
Can the photo become part of the permanent record along with this email that was sent? Not attached to the resolution, just as part of the file on this particular application?
It is now, yeah.
Yes, and it also has been saved to the webpage as well, as is our standard practice.
Okay, thank you.
So it's not a photo that has been taken by Martha or any other staff member, and it does not constitute something that we would consider if we were looking at this photo in application. So it's simply something, it's a matter of the, that person opining that that is what is to be considered, not that it is the same as staff having taken a photo. Is that clear?
I kind of, as I read it, and I didn't, I haven't really thought about it a lot because it just came. But I thought, reading it, it seemed a little bit of overkill in the whole, in resolutions to my mind should be kind of to the point, short and sweet. The explanation could, goes along with the reports and the additional information that's in the record. But to put it all in a resolution seems like, like you're rewriting the minutes of the meeting or something.
Exactly, so if we were going to do this, we would take it back to a new hearing and go through it, I think, in more detail. But that's where I would, go ahead, Phyllis.
All right, I'd like to hear what Ann has to say on this. But to me, it looked like on page five, in that first paragraph where it talks about views from different places that a phrase be added, you know, including the view from the bedroom window of whatever the number is, you know, of the house next door. And you'll write a whole paragraph on it, and you know, it's just a matter of adding in a phrase along with the other areas that were mentioned, that the view would be obstructed with the bay window.
I'm sorry.
Affect the privacy.
Which, which page are you on? Are you on the page of the resolution?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, let me.
Yeah. The black five and not the red 20.
Okay, I see required findings, excuse me for a moment.
So if I can just explain the process for, if that's helpful, Commissioner, Chairman Chase. So as you know, this, this resolution was really intended, that staff drafted, was intended to reflect the deliberation and the results sort of of the, of the public hearing and the motion that was made by the commission at the last, I guess it was two meetings ago, that the planning commission held on this application. We have drafted this resolution to include all of the information that we had at that time. And, you know, in order to actually add additional or modify this resolution, certainly we'd want the entire commission to agree that that should be modified as such. Essentially, that's, that's sort of, and based on new evidence that sort of is being presented now by Mr. Stolman that was not available previously. So it's certainly an option that's available to the commission. And I think it's just the process sort of needs to be essentially, you're, you're making additional, including additional evidence into the finding as to why the finding for the bay window cannot be made. And that's what is being requested by Mr. Stolman.
If it would Director Metcalfe still like me to weigh in?
Yes, please.
At the meeting where this was considered, the commission took evidence and it made a decision. The decision included disallowing the bay window. And the, as Adam said, the resolution reflects the deliberations of the commission at that time. If the commission wishes to reopen that conversation and take new evidence, as Adam said, the commission can do so. But it seems to me that given that the end result is unlikely to be different, this new information is unlikely to cause a change in the disallowance of the bay window. I'm not sure it's a good precedent to reopen the matter from new evidence. It's, of course, the commission's call.
Right. So at this point, I'm going to ask the other commissioners if you guys want to weigh in on this at all, just as a comment before we decide what to do with it, we have to take public comment on this. So Dr. Bundy.
I guess I would be inclined to accept the information that came in, incorporate it into the document and approve it.
Well, we'd have to take this back to a new hearing to do so. Yeah.
Ann, do you want to weigh in on that?
I'm not in favor of doing that.
Well, we have, we have not agendized this matter as one where the commission will be taking new evidence. And if you're inclined to change the resolution beyond the decision that you outlined in the last meeting when this was discussed, then I think it's reasonable to, to go ahead and reopen the meeting so that everybody, including the applicant, has a chance to also submit additional evidence.
Right.
The commission can do that, since it hasn't yet documented its decision in a resolution. But I do think it needs to allow all interested parties to submit new evidence if it's going to allow this in and change the resolution based on this evidence, this new evidence. So yes, I would agree that a new public hearing would be the way to go, an open, open public hearing, right?
Commissioner Rizzo.
I think that it's, we're not going to be changing the, the end result and it's going to cause a lot more work for everybody. And, and I feel that it was adequately, adequately documented. And I think bringing it back could open up a whole, a whole other discussion on another part of the project as well. So I think we, we determined, made a decision on this one.
Okay, Commissioner Metcalfe.
Well, I don't see where it changes our decision.
Right.
Our decision was to remove the bay window. And the three people who voted for it did see that, that the bay window looking out could look into the other home. So whether it looks into the yard or, or it looks into the bedroom makes no difference. It says in the resolution itself that the bay window is to be removed, and reasons given have to be with blocking views and affecting privacy. So it's taken care of without that particular phrase. If putting in that phrase is going to be another hearing, another meeting, I think we've spent a lot of time on this and it's going to be the same result.
Agreed, I think that the resolution speaks for the result, what we came to as a commission, and it should stand by itself, and it does the trick, it does what was intended to be done. So that said, I will open this to Tracy to see if she has any raised hands for this item.
I do. Mr. Stolman, you should be able to unmute yourself. If you want to show your video, I can add you as a panelist.
No. I'm just unmuted myself and I don't see my picture. I just want to say, I don't want to open this up for a whole new hearing. That wasn't my intent at all, it's just to make the resolution more accurate because at least three of the commissioners could see that people could sit on the window seat and look into my house. And I thought that the staff report didn't include that and wasn't accurate. And that's why I sent the email, I don't want to open this up for a whole new hearing. But it should include, when it says at the top of page five, if you look at the top of page five, it says that from the window seat, they can sit and look at my patio and pool area. And it should say bedroom, comma patio and pool area. It should have one more word in there, to be accurate and simply to match the facts. And I'm sure what you want is accuracy.
Is that all, Mr. Stolman?
Yeah. That is all, yes, thank you.
Thank you. All right. So any other raised hands?
No, no raised hands, Chair Chase.
Okay, so then we will close the public comment of this item and bring it back to the commission to see if we want to just vote on this as, as presented and adopt the resolution as it is. So we can have a motion to do that. Anybody want to make a motion to adopt the resolution as it's presented?
Make the motion to adopt the resolution as presented.
Second.
Is, is that what you want, Adam, or do you want me to phrase it differently?
Sorry, I think typically we would just make a motion and reference the the title block in the matter of permanent amendment number, et cetera. If you can do that, I'd appreciate that just for clarity. And if I, and if I may, I just, I feel like I don't want to leave this item without just trying to clarify from a, you know, from staff's perspective, what we included was what we heard at the deliberation by the commission at the last meeting. So we do think it is an accurate representation of what we heard at the last meeting from the commissioners. And that's what was codified here, so, or memorialized in this draft resolution. So yeah, the motion would be with respect to.
I got it.
Yeah.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution 22-005 in pursuit of the assembly, oh no. Sorry, guys. The permanent amendment to application PL 21-0084 for the modifications to previously approved design and review application at 78 Granada Avenue.
Thank you, second.
Okay, and I'll take the roll, we'll start with Commissioner Rizzo. Commissioner Bendel.
Yes.
Commissioner Bundy.
Yes.
Vice Chair Metcalfe.
Yes.
Chairman Chase.
Yes. Okay.
And before we go any further, the email and the picture will be part of the permanent file, correct, Martha?
Yes, it will be part of the file, yes, correct.
Okay, so that's there. Can you send anybody questions in?
And I'll also read the appeal rights on this. Following action by the planning commission at a public hearing or meeting, any decision may be appealed to the town council within 10 calendar days. Appeal forms are available by contacting staff or on the internet, and there is a $300 filing fee.
Thank you, Martha. My next item is a new hearing for 622 Oakdale Avenue. What we'll do for this item, as we do with all new hearing items, is to have staff presentation, presentation from the applicant. We'll have a round of questions from commissioners. And then we'll go to public comment on this item, followed by deliberations. So there's been a lot of commentary about this, so we'll dive right in. First, I want to ask the commissioners as to what your observation of the site was, I'll start with you, Margaret.
I went there, I talked to the, the people, the applicant, and I saw their side yard and their backyard and looked at the story poles all around. I, I went and I talked to the neighbors, I forget the number of that. Yeah, and I went inside their house and observed the area that they thought would be impacted and, and the outside of the house. The other houses that were on the list, I walked around their house, the house that I was most concerned that I didn't get to see because no one was there was, was a house that said that their view would be further impacted, it had already been impacted by the building on the corner, and, and it would be further impacted. But I, from their second story, I wasn't invited into the second story and I, there was nobody home. So I just observed what I could see from the different houses.
Thank you. Commissioner Bundy.
I visited the site 618, the applicant's 622, and also 621, nobody was home at 615.
Okay, Commissioner Rizzo. You're muted there.
Working on a very small laptop today. I was able to visit 621, 618, 622, and 626. 615 gentleman wasn't home, but there was someone to let me in, into their yard. That's as far as I got from, on that house. But I was, I was able to see views from each one of the properties stated.
Thank you, Phyllis.
I, yes, I did not enter any of the homes, I rely on Phil's pictures for that. I, early in the morning, I walked around the neighborhood. I walked around each of the homes that have been mentioned. And I got an idea of, from the story poles, exactly what the effect would be or not be on each of them.
Very good. Myself, I visited the neighborhood twice. It went on last Saturday morning and walked around and stood in the front yard of every home there. Today, I went into 618 and spoke to Dr. Young. And he showed me the viewpoints that are outlined in the staff report. And then I also again walked the neighborhood. So that's my visit to the area. So, Mr. Boyle, are you going to start us off tonight?
Yes, I am, Chair Chase, if I can share my screen. Hopefully, can everyone see that PowerPoint slide?
Yes.
All right, let me just orient myself here. All right, good evening, Chair Chase, members of the planning commission and members of the public. Of course, my name is Phil Boyle, senior planner with the town. And the project before you this evening is a design review application for a 945 square foot second floor addition to the home at 622 Oakdale Avenue. This project is located on the eastern end of Oakdale Avenue, the hillier part of Oakdale, just behind Manzanita Court, as you can see here, 622 in the middle of the slide. You may recall, 626 came before you, I think maybe about a year and a half ago, for a second story addition as well, and that you probably all saw, if you walked in the neighborhood, so that project is currently under construction. 622, it is located here, it is slightly above 618, which is one of the neighbors who has concerns. It is quite a bit above 7, Manzanita Court, which is down here, which a neighbor may also speak this evening. And it is relatively level, maybe slightly, slightly below the houses that are across the street on Oakdale Avenue. Commenters include 621 and 615. Letters, yeah, and I'll, I'll give more, into more detail of letters of support and letters of concern. So that's the overall project location. And the proposed site plan is shown here, and again, these are all in your packet. This is a site plan which also shows both adjacent homes to the east and west. And this shows that, that Oakdale Avenue is in the bottom of the slide. Driveway, a single, single level garage. And then the, the original single level house incorporates this lighter gray area. And the dark gray area is where the second level addition is proposed, oriented in the back, you know, back right of the home for a variety of different reasons. Just want to point out that, that the applicant did work closely with the folks that did 627, I'm sorry, 626, as you saw a little while ago. They, when 626 was doing their addition, they had conversations with 622. They said they were going to go up, so they both worked cohesively and came up with various compromises for retaining views and privacy. So that's the, the overall site plan, again, there's no, no grading involved, no addition of block coverage. There's addition, of course, of floor area ratio because the second level is directly on top of the existing home. The current view of, of the site today with the story poles, 626 on the right, under construction, and 618 on the left, behind the trees there. Another street view, street view shown in the plan set, which again shows the existing home with, with the two homes on either side and the one under construction. Again, this same picture again on the lower, lower right with current, of the current street view. In terms of the, the existing and proposed first level, really hardly any changes. So I'm really just showing you the proposed first level, just for simple, to simplify. This is an existing bedroom and it's being turned into the stairway and the mudroom to accommodate the stair to get to the second floor. No other changes to the first floor except for the garage, which I'll, I'll talk about in a moment. The proposed second level is completely new, of course, and consists of, again, orienting you to the stairway here, taking you up to, to a living, living room closest to, to Oakdale Avenue, hallway, office to the west, which is a point of concern regarding the neighborhood, 618. Hallway leading to the master closet, master bedroom, to our master bath and master bedroom on the, the northern part of the property, taking advantage of views to the north and then also views to the, to the west of Mount Tam, which is take place here in the master bedroom as well as the office. And, and a, and a window off of the living room as well. So that's the proposed second level. Existing and proposed front elevation will look like this. As I mentioned in the staff port, staff report, these windows were originally square and a little bit larger. The applicant modified their, their proposal after conversations with the neighbors to, to minimize privacy and reduce the size of those windows. The opposite side, looking at in the rear to the north, again, master bedroom window here, office window here, looking to the north, as well as these, this window from, I'll call version one, the version two. The size of this window was also reduced per the request of the neighbor to the north. Existing and proposed for the east elevation, which is looking towards, towards 626, which is under construction, mainly clear story windows to minimize impacts to their backyard. These windows could look, you know, pretty directly down into the backyard of 626. So those, 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 those have not been changed from version one to version two, as far as I know. And then lastly, the west elevation, which contains the, the front door, the chimney, and again, that, these four windows here, these have been reduced in size as well since the original design to, in response to the neighbors concerned, master bedroom window, office window, and stairway and living room windows here. So that's the proposed east and, I'm sorry, proposed and existing west elevation. In terms of the project summary, I will go through all of these. Uh the the project meets all requirements of the R one zoning district um in terms of floor ratio, lot coverage, setbacks, height, um and it will um once the um condition of approval is satisfied regarding parking, it will meet the parking requirement for two covered spaces. Um and I will, I'll I'll go into a little bit detail about some of the that one of the one of the legal non-conforming conditions that exists um in one portion of the home. But overall, the the project is is, you know, meets all of all the numbers, and again, no variances are being requested. Just to clarify, there was some discussion about the legal non-conforming original structure. Um a lot of images here, what I'm trying to communicate to you all. This is the site plan here. Um Oakdale on the bottom, parking spaces, garage. And now zooming into this box here, I blow it up in in this um image, and this is all directly from the plans. And this tells us that the um the existing addition will be eight feet, nine inches from the side property line. The exist, I'm sorry, not the existing, the proposed, the proposed addition will meet the setback requirements and it will be eight feet, nine inches um from the side property line where six feet is required. Currently, um this part of the building does not conform um to the six-foot setback. Uh this building was built in nineteen fifty prior to the establishment of the side yard setback. And so this is what we call an existing non-conforming condition being four feet, six inches away. Um and just by by also additional information, moving full closer forward to the house, the garage itself, this is a bedroom. The garage itself wall does meet the setback requirement to six um six feet, four inches away. We have many cases, we have homes that are that have legal non-conforming um built um parts of their building, their walls, uh as long as one is not adding to a wall that is not conforming, as long as any new wall that is being constructed meets the setback requirements, which this project does, then um the the building is, it meets the code. Um they, I mean, obviously, that it's still legal non-conforming, but um the legal non-conformity does not have to be um fixed for a project of this um of this magnitude, because the addition does meet the code. Hope that's clear. Um in terms of the carport to garage legalization, uh as stated in the staff report, um staff had discussions with the applicant. The applicant did convert their carport to a garage um in the summer of two thousand twenty. I believe they will there, they will speak a little bit more in detail of that process. Um this work was done without permits and they have agreed and they will be required to legalize that garage conversion. Um so in their building permit set of plans that they submit, if this project is approved, um when they submit those plans to the town for the second level addition, they will also include plans to showing how that the garage was converted from a carport to a garage and also specifically that the um um that this wall that was built right here um will be removed, and as they show here, the plan showed to to be removed. So this garage will meet the required um parking space size, which is a minimum of nine feet by nineteen feet, that which it will meet, and this rectangle shows that it will. So if if the project is is approved, this condition approval is in the um attached resolution and this garage uh will be legally um modified and the project will meet the parking requirements for the town of Corrida with two covered parking spaces outside of the setbacks and proper size um covered and independent of each other. So jumping back to legal non-conforming garage conversion um neighborhood outreach. Um this is showing, as I often showed in my reports, the various um neighbors who have um indicated um support for the project and neighbors who neighbors who have expressed concerns. Um the stars here, one, two, and three are folks that provided letters of support that are in your packet. And uh red rectangles are a neighbors who have expressed concern of various types. And I think majority of those folks are present. Um this evening, we'll hear from them. Um just an example of some of the neighboring houses, um two-story homes on either side, these two here, a two-story home across the street and then single-story homes across the street as well. Um so it's a neighborhood of both uh both single and two-story homes. Um wanted to highlight, just this is just one example of the shade study. Um actually, two shade studies were done um per the request of six eighteen to the west. They're very concerned about the 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 shading potential from this project. Um the original shade study was done with um with a fence, with the the existing fence and the existing vegetation shown here. And it was also done where the two lots were on the same level, which I believe is pretty common for shade studies. Uh but doesn't, you know, exactly reflect conditions, because in this case, six eighteen, as I mentioned before, is slightly downhill of six twenty-two, approximately three feet. Um so per um per staff and six eighteen's request, the applicant did a second shade study, which is, this is um example of it here, the results of it. And this shade study um removes the fence, removes the vegetation, and puts six eighteen approximately three feet below six twenty-two. Um what I've indicate, and this is, and this is one snapshot of that shade study. The shade study encompasses um four times during the year at the equinoxes and solstices. And this is um the March, this is in March at two AM, I'm sorry, ten AM. Um so this just shows, this is the existing pattern. This is what's happening, will happen in March um without the addition, and you have a little bit of shading coming over. This is roughly the property line here. And then I've highlighted here, this is what happens, you know, when the the project is built. Um you'll have additional additional shading back here. You'll have additional shading on six eighteen, um this yellow um circle here. And that's why I pointed that out, and obviously some additional shading here. Again, this is just one snapshot. The entire shade study is is in your packet for your review, and I can certainly answer any questions that you have. I also provided um indicator here of where that exterior patio of six eighteen um has expressed concern for shading and privacy. So that's generally the area of that of that patio there. Um in terms of privacy analysis, um again, staff visited the home and yard of six eighteen, took photographs per our guidelines. Um all these photographs are in the staff report. The three main windows are areas where there's concern about privacy is the sliding glass door off of that patio that I just showed you, and then two bathroom windows um further down the house, all on the um on the east elevation. And one of those is has a frost, is frosted glass in that bathroom window. The second level office, as I mentioned before, is is designed, you know, per the applicants and the designer to take advantage of the views um west of Mount Tam. Um it's it's proposed to be an office with um a desk in front and that would probably allow probably, you know, a result in the occupant sitting back from the window and perhaps, you know, making it a little bit more difficult to look down into um six eighteen. Um but that's all for each individual's analysis. Um these are pictures of, uh lower picture is while I'm sitting at the dining room table. You can see the story polls uh off up to the left here. And then this picture is me approximately uh two feet away from the sliding glass door, looking straight out. Story polls, I said, the upper left here, and and there's actually an story poll here as well. Um be sure this, this here is the um the office um office window and office wall. Um this is looking and in the patio and you're shooting up, looking up towards the um the office um window there itself, chimney on here on the left. These are the two bathroom windows. Um I think both these pictures are at eye level, standing about two feet away from the window, looking straight out. Um this is the window, this is the bathroom that that's closer to the patio. And you can see the story polls here. This one, you see the story poll is just above the fence. Um based upon all the analysis and information that staff has uh gathered and and had numerous meetings with uh the applicant, the designer, uh the neighbors. As I point out, the staff report, you had a specific Zoom meeting, which in which I thought was very beneficial, included all the neighbors uh and the applicant. Um specifically did not have that meeting include um the project designer nor um any other architects. Um just because it wanted to have communication this as clear um between neighbors. Um and no subsequent meeting was requested by the neighbors or or the applicants to have um architecture designers present. So with the analysis that's done, um staff is able to make all the findings for this project and recommends that the planning commission approve the draft resolution, which again includes the condition of approval for uh the carport to garage conversion um for this application. And welcome to answer any questions that you have, and of course, the the applicant and the applicant's designer is here as well.
Thank you, Phil. Um at this point, then, I'm going to ask the commissioners if they have any questions for Phil or staff as a part of this presentation, uh after which we'll move to a presentation from the applicant. Um so let's start with you, uh Phil. Do you have any questions for Mr. Boyle?
Not at this time.
Okay. Mr. Rizzo.
Uh two questions. Um Phil, how tall is the sill height? Um is it, is it at just egress height of of the office that is pretty much the window in question? Is it like thirty-six inches high or forty-two, just meets egress? You know? Maybe I could ask the architect. Um I can ask the architect.
Yeah, because I know they did, they did just reduce it in size, so I'm sure.
Yeah, I I remember you saying that reading through it. Um.
I can check, I'm looking for this section.
What else, Mr. Rizzo?
Um my second question, just as I know the fire marshal was out there, I was wondering if he had any comments about the existing, any of the existing uh defensible area, if he requested anything to be removed or all the all the vegetation could remain for privacy reasons.
Um yeah, that this, the fire marshal did review the project, as I mentioned, the staff report, or I mean, I mentioned in the response letter from um uh the attorney, um the fire marshal reviewed the project. He is requesting a vegetation management plan. He did not specifically say that existing vegetation on the west side or or any side of the home needs to be removed.
Um so I just wanted to know if you targeted anything. Thank you.
No, he he did not in his in his review.
Okay.
Um and I'm I'm looking at the section and unfortunately, Mr. Rizzo, it does not show the section across, since I'm not finding the section across the office for the and the sill height of that window. But I bet the architect, I bet the designer can tell us that.
We'll ask that question, yeah. Sure, he's listening very carefully. So um then uh let's go to you, uh Margaret. Do you have any questions for um Mr. Boyle?
Um do you know what the uh use of that second enclosed garage bay is now?
Um my understanding is that is is used um as an office by one of the the occupants of the home.
I don't have any other questions.
Okay. Doctor Bundy?
Uh Phil, were there any plans to underground utilities going to six twenty-two or did or and or did we specify that for six twenty-six?
Um no, on both counts. Um I I've not heard from from the applicants of six twenty-two that they want to um underground, and my understanding is the town of Corrida still does not require undergrounding for major additions. I believe they do under require undergrounding for new homes.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't have any questions for you, uh Mr. Boyle, so uh we'll go right to uh I presume that uh the applicant will speak or the architect will speak. Who will go first?
Hi, we'll go first, if that's all right.
Certainly.
I'm Libby, this is Ben. Uh so thank you all for taking the time to do this. It's it's very gracious of you to to use your Tuesday night in this way. I know it's normal for you, but this is new for us. Um we enjoyed meeting uh commissioners um Bandell and and uh and Bundy and Rizzo. So thank you very much for taking the time to come into our home. Um I think before we get into the nitty-gritty of thing, we just wanted to just tell you a little bit about ourselves. So Ben and I have two children named Luke and Julia. They were four and two when we moved to Corrida seven years ago. They both have always been in Corrida schools. We have really wonderful relationships with this community and with the Neil Cummins friends that we've made. Um we are also people who work here. So I'm a learning specialist at Marin Country Day School here in Corrida. Ben's a clinical psychologist, too, whose work life has shifted, like most have, to a predominantly remote practice. So that was a difficult transition in March of two thousand twenty. Ben moved into our very cluttered garage, and I tried to teach kids who have disabilities on Zoom while my being my kids' teacher, too. Um so what was really nice and made us even more connected with this area is that uh we became, we kept our sanity by going out on the trails as much as we could and just enjoying where we live. So we're all back at school, the kids and me, and for a while, which has been really nice to be part of this community as well. Um parents are in that way, truly. And uh but Ben has remained working remotely. His job as a psychologist has has transitioned almost entirely that way. Um so this addition will not only provide that space for Ben to work, but also for our family to grow while not leaving this need and love, and will allow us to make this really wonderful investment. That's a big investment for us for our kids' future. Um I'm gonna let Ben speak here a little bit.
So unfortunately, I'm gonna, I am gonna get into the nitty-gritty, I guess. Um but I'll I'll try not to be long-winded. I know it's it's a long night for everybody, but I but I do want to say thank you one again, everybody, for the time consideration of towns into the application, and I also want to thank those neighbors who attended tonight. So Libby and I, she told you a little bit about the family, but let me just add, I was raised here in Marin County, just up the road in Nevada. My siblings, uh my parents, uh they're here, my my siblings are educated in the in the school systems here in Marin, and and we all remain here in the area. And so this is all to say that um we have deep roots here, right? And um we love this community. We're planning on remaining here for the long term, certainly so. Um you know, as mentioned, this project is a really important for us, uh for our children, for our future, obviously, an investment in the community. Uh for myself, Libby mentioned this, a hundred percent of my work, like so many people, has gone remote over the last few years, and I think by and large, this is going to remain that way. I think for my profession, the systems I work within, so partially and this project is is intended to provide professional space for an office, which, you know, I think is badly needed and um I I have been working out of the garage for the past couple of years, and and my decision to enclose the carport um on this on the southern edge of the property, you know, that really was an effort at uh creating a space that was usable. And and so, you know, I wouldn't be impacted. Um number one, I think the noise in the street, but also, you know, we had the build next door, and I knew that was going to go on in the summer and fall and um you know, and and also because the nature of my work as a therapist, right, where there's, you know, I was, I knew I had to find a solution to those privacy issues, and I but I also recognize this isn't a realistic solution for number reasons, and and has acknowledged an application for this build, and and as pointed out, that space will have to be converted back to a a proper garage space as per code, and I just want to genuinely acknowledge I made an error in doing that work without a permit. I take full accountability, you know, certainly for that mistake. Um let me, let me take some time to address some of the unique concerns of the neighbors and the findings of the planning department staff as well. So I I think we've really tried uh to make this design a thoughtful and considerate project with which needs not just our own needs, but also appreciates the impact it'll have on the surrounding community. Um I think we will really try to put forward a design to the best of our ability, which finds a compromise between all the adjacent neighbors, which is is no easy feat, right? I mean, the the especially in this neighborhood, we're all in really close proximity to to each other, so um I'm sure you can appreciate how difficult that is, but you know, we've intentionally designed narrow build, the the walls are set back. I'm sure you can appreciate how difficult that is, but you know, we've intentionally designed narrow build, the walls are set back and the existing exterior walls, we use hip roofs instead of gable roofs. As a mean of lower, means of lowering the height of the build. And and I'll point out too, I think we've really enjoyed a particularly collaborative relationship with with the Hans Myers, our neighbors to the east and have been really happy to make. Certain design changes which have complemented their own project. So we know that there are some concerns from our neighbors to the west, the Youngs, that the project and the dormer in particular will will impact their privacy and. As noted, you know, we had in that first design, we presented, which we presented to our neighbors in. Early September last year, it had that additional dormer which was facing west and also the southern facing wall and we moved back, you know, the wall in two, three more feet, we removed that dormer. And, you know, I think that had a fairly good result in the sense that according to the shade studies, right, it resulted in very, those changes resulted in really very little loss of light to the. To the young's patio area and we also feel it was a significant gesture of reducing any perceived privacy impacts, at least the removal of the dormer certainly. So, you know, we want to note too that the remaining dormer that is placed, it is placed as far north as possible and we did that intentionally and any further, it'll it'll start to kind of impinge upon that vaulted ceiling you have on the ground floor, which of course, you know, we wish to keep. Right in the living room on our on our ground floor, right, yeah. And in this dormer, as mentioned too, it'll have a desk below the window and, you know, we think, you know, unless I climbed up on top of the desk, which I'm unlikely to do, of course, that it's very unlikely that I'll be able to see much of anything below the the young's roof line, whether that's their bathroom windows. Most certainly the patio area and we do have some photos that, you know, we thought we could you could share, which we we hope will kind of reinforce that perspective and give people a sort of a sense of. Of what we're getting at here. So bear with me, let me see if I can share my my screen here. All right, so let me back up a little bit here. So this this first picture you see here, I mean, what I've done is I've climbed up on the roof and. I'm I'm trying, I'm trying to be like dead center, you know, right in where I thought the dormer would be, as you see that yellow tape on the top, that is the, that's the roof line. And I'm probably about three to four feet back from what I perceive as, you know, the sort of a wall right there.
I just want to enter for one second. If you see that it's squeezed out, it's that we tried to put it in Google slides for easy sharing. We're not trying to like. We can share with you the actual photos. It's just for the nature of presenting it, this was the easier way, but we're happy to share the actual photos.
And this and this is just to give perspective. I mean, this one is sort of what I thought, this is roughly proportional six by four. I mean, it's impossible to sort of get an exact representation. I totally get that. But, you know, I do think it shows that would be really hard, it would really, really tough to see the patio certainly, but also those bathroom windows and. You know, I think something that is obvious though, and it wouldn't be contested is we get those views, right? I mean, we have that Christmas tree hill right there, we have. Mount Tam right there and, you know, that's really what we're, of course, you know, investing in with that dormer. Finally, you know, I know, I know the Youngs had Mr. Harlock put a design together and one of the main components of that was was pushing that that office over to the east side and. That would replace where our closet is in in that design. So we know exactly where that would be and so we got up on the roof, we looked. So as you can see, I mean, the Hans Myers yard, all their living space there, it's right there and it extends fifty to seventy five feet. Out there, so I would be able to, of course, geek into that a lot easier than I think it was on the other side. And importantly too, I mean, if you kind of, if you can see that to the to the right of the picture. Those upper story windows are their daughters' rooms and and, you know, that's line of sight. I could see right into their daughters' room. So. Anyway, I think this this depicts, hopefully it depicts that, I think the privacy impacts are much more pronounced, I think, for the Hans Myers if we were to adopt that. You know, that design change, which which Mr. Mr. Harlock suggested. Okay, so let me. So, you know, I'll just quickly, quickly address some other neighbors' concerns, you know, we feel we've done our best within the limits of the design to accommodate, you know, certain requests and. Our neighbor below us at Seven Manzanita, you know, I know she's expressed concerns about the privacy impact that our bedroom window would have and. You know, I feel like I've had a couple of really productive in-person meetings with Linnea, the owner of Seven Manzanita and. And Libby and I have agreed to significantly reduce the window size by twenty square feet and, you know, we're hope, we're, you know, hopeful that that is, you know, of course acceptable to Linnea and hopefully that. And I see that that's reflected in the design we should submit it tonight too, so. And then finally, I know the neighbors at six twenty one Oakdale have expressed concerns about the view to the north and. Again, I've had, you know, very several quite pleasant, very civil conversations with Michael and Irene about the matter and. You know, we we know that the design that we have, it's it's pushed forward to the north really as as far as possible, you know, to minimize impacts on the street to those folks to the south and. What we what we tried to do is, you know, offer that reduced size of the windows facing the street and also offer to remove a tree there that sort of faces Michael and Irene's property and. And hopefully that'll that'll improve their view to a certain extent.
It appears that your screen is stuck, at least it is on my view. Does anybody else have that thing? There we go.
Okay.
Okay, sorry. So at any rate, you know, we already kind of acknowledged this, but we know as a condition of approval, you know, we'll have to convert the renovated garage space back into usable. Car garage that needs code and we also have to remove the shed on the western side of property. We find these conditions very reasonable and we're happy to comply with that reservation. I just want to say, I think we want to say that, you know, we're very happy that planning staff agree that the project's compatible with the character of the neighborhood. Conforms all provisions of the zoning ordinance and probably most importantly, adheres to the to general principles and philosophy of the general plan of the town of Corder Madara. Again, I apologize, this probably did turn out to be a bit long-winded, but I just want to thank you for taking the time to listen to our presentation or view our application and. I think we have some time left, we're going to turn things over to David Graham of G Family Design to present some of the more tactical aspects of the of the project.
Yeah, thank you very much. Okay, David, it sounds like you're on.
Good evening, Planning Commission, Planning Staff and Community of Corder Madara. Thank you for taking the time to hear. Out our submission for the second story addition of six two two Oakdale. My name is David Grabham, owner of G Design, G Family Construction, G Landscape, G Electric. We started our construction company over twenty years ago. I've been a lifelong builder with my family and my father. And we started a design company around fifteen years ago. Our combined group is well over a hundred employees with no plans to stop growing. And to become the lead standard for design build construction in the Bay Area. Our focus from the start of any design is to capture our clients' needs and guide them through the design process with the understanding. Of what the planning department is looking for, such as not double stacking walls on the setback, stepping the house back to avoid massing at the street. Considering the impact of neighbors' light view and privacy. Our intention is to create thoughtful, beautiful designs and enhance. And bring value to neighborhoods where we work, considering the neighbors and their needs and our clients' needs also. At the start of the project, we work closely with the planning departments anytime we start a project. In reviewing neighbor impact to ensure that we're headed in the right direction. We met with Phil during our conceptual meeting. And worked with him closely on the preliminary project designs for both six two two Oakdale and six two six Oakdale. The project next door is also the designer for. To create a side-by-side neighborhood development improvement that would reduce impact on views, although creating a second story. Trying to keep light and neighborhood mass and design consistent with Corder Madara development standards. When I've designed both of the projects, I knew that creating a second story additions and blocking the views of the neighbors behind, there was not really. Anything I could do about that, but I knew that if I aligned them a certain way, I'd create view corridors between the two houses. By strategically designing the houses to go long toward the back instead of wide. We intentionally designed the house at six two two with a hip roof and ceiling height of eight foot eight inches, keeping the roof height to twenty three feet. At the tallest point substantially less than the thirty feet allowed for. To further reduce impact on the uphill neighbors' views over the house in the shade direct neighbors on the sides. When we designed sixty six, the shade study showed us that when designing six two two Oakdale. We'd need to substantially set back the addition from the west to reduce shade and privacy impact on six eighteen. We also were that aligning the addition with the front of six eighteen would allow for Mount Tam views for sixty six and when aligned. The greatest privacy impact would be on sixty six and the adjacent bedroom windows and backyard. Where they spent most of their time as Libby and Ben showed you. One of the key parts of the view corridor on the design is that we we set. Six two two back far enough so that the neighbors across the street, when they look at sixty six and six two two, how they align. It's pushed like this, so it actually opens up the view between the houses and that's on the tight side where the houses are the closest. Because on the other side where six eighteen is, is where we are trying to push as much from the side yard to reduce the shade impact. And that created a larger corridor on on that side between six eighteen and six twenty two. From the start of the design conceptual, we created, we were very aware, we were stuck between a rock and a hard place, trying to consider everyone, make conscious decisions. From the start, we stepped back the house substantially twenty six feet between six eighteen and six. Twenty two at the dormers with the main body of the addition up to thirty six feet from six eighteen. Thinking that this would eliminate the concerns of six eighteen for both privacy and shade, considering most homes in Marin are built. On or close to the setbacks and get approved every day. This was done in hopes that six eighteen would see our effort to accommodate their privacy and light. And potentially give us support for the project. Unfortunately, six eighteen did not feel that we had done enough and said that. The courtyard was where they spent most of their time and believed that my client should not do a second story at all. After the neighborhood meeting with Phil, I believe the owners at six eighteen were made aware that a second story addition was going to happen in some way. And they should narrow their focus to what the negative impacts were. So that we could try to do something to compromise. We were made aware that the main concerns of six eighteen was the side courtyard. The dining room where they spend most of their time during the morning hours, they were under the impression. That this would be shaded by the addition and felt that their privacy was compromised by the windows above at the dormer. After Phil relayed this information to us about the concerns of six eighteen and the shade privacy of the patio, we pulled the dormer off the west side of the house. To move the windows back between houses thirty six feet and almost eight feet from the side yard setback. Again, we're eight feet from the side yard setback. Along with removing the dormer, we pulled the south wall in several feet to allow for the sun not to catch the corner of the roof. Of the building for the reducing the impact of direct sunlight to the property, or so we thought. Once we revised the model in place with the revision, we were happy to see that the shade study showed absolutely no impact on six eighteen. Of the adjacent and felt that because of the three-foot retaining wall, six-foot fence pulling the dormer back would satisfy both the privacy and shade concerns. The shade study that Phil showed actually was with the fence removed. So that the little part of the dormer that actually shades on the fence, with that fence there, if you look at the other shade study. It shows totally different because the fence is actually blocking most of the shade going into the neighbor's yard. So once we pulled the fence off. We had that six feet reduced on the shade study, so even though it shows on the shade study without the fence, I would say the one with the fence is more accurate. In that area. Our computer program creates a sun study which automatically, once the pin is dropped. The computer also automatically creates our story polls, neither of which can be altered once the data is put in. Both have been questioned by the owners of six eighteen and we reviewed both the shade study and the story polls with Phil. There's not, just the way that our architectural design program is done with the modeling, there's no way to fudge either of those things. Beyond all the tries to accommodate six eighteen, several other concessions were made. On all the other sides with reducing the window side, the south facing wall of the neighbor on the uphill side by one third. Additionally, we reduced the back window by twenty square feet, as Ben said, to work with the neighbor on the lower street level. When we reduce the windows on the back in order to be consistent, we also reduce the windows again on sixty six side. All in all, when we design homes, we really, really try to take into consideration the neighbors and the impact in the neighbors. Because this is Marin and because when neighbors are impacted, it becomes a very personal thing to them. And it it's very hard. To accommodate and appease everybody and I really feel like Ben and Libby are really wonderful people and very, very considerate people. And when we started this design. We knew that the neighbors at six eighteen would 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 not be in support of this project, although we hoped that. We could do designs in the way that would really show them that we really tried to to consider them in this project. I've designed countless projects in Marin and I've never had such. Big side yard setbacks before for anybody and shade study with no impact. And a bathroom window, you know, that you're in for an office view seems like about as good as it could get as far as I'm concerned. So. I really feel like again that that we we really tried to listen to the neighbors, we tried to accommodate everybody. But there was only so much we can do at this point, so. I'd like to save my time, if I could, for a response after the neighbors. Have their time to to talk, if that's possible, and open it up to any questions you guys might have for me.
Yes, I'm sure that we'll have some questions after public comment that we may want to resume the conversation. That said, I do want to ask you right off the bat, do you know the sill height of the window in that study?
Yes, three foot six.
Three foot six, okay.
Yeah.
That applies one of Mr. Rizzo's questions. So, Mr. Rizzo, do you have any further questions for the architect?
I don't at this time. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Bandell, do you have any questions for the architect?
No, thank you.
Okay, all right, and. Dr. Bundy, do you have any questions for the architect?
Yeah, David, just I had reviewed and tried to get a sense of Michael Harlock's. Proposed renovation of that second story. And the way he redid the stairs and changed things down. I understand from Ben that that, you know, some of this would create more problems for the other neighbors that you took into consideration. But were there aspects of his design or in, you know, rethinking your own design that could have been different?
I've actually built houses with Michael and he's a wonderful person and I have absolutely nothing bad to say about him. And have respect for his architectural abilities. However, you know, when you're doing design, the key element of the design is the house and the floor below. And unfortunately, Michael Harlock didn't meet with my clients and and was not involved in the whole process. Around the whole entire community and neighborhood of what we tried to do in order to make this thing, this thing work, so. There is a lot of things that you could do differently in any design, but I really feel like we put together. A very thoughtful design with the client's needs in mind and the neighbors' needs in mind. And I think that there is nothing that I would change and unfortunately, Michael didn't spend the time with them that I did in order to create those designs. Which anytime an architect comes in, I don't even know how they would. Put something like that together. I don't know why Michael did that, but. You know, like I said, I have a lot of respect for Michael and in his work and and. But spending time with the client and actually being part of the project instead of spending, I don't know, five or five or ten hours. Instead of four hundred, I don't think that you can really put together a good design that really is thoughtful for a client at any time, so.
No further questions.
Okay, thank you. All right, Phyllis, do you have any questions for the architect?
More of a comment. Looking at Michael's design. And it's basically what I thought of when I looked at it. Your design about your flipping over the office and the walk-in closet. I don't understand why Michael changed the design of the staircase. And turned it into an L shape. If it was a straight staircase as your design had. Is there any possibility of uh changing the position of the office and the walk-in closet?
Well, first of all, Mike, oh, sorry. Are you done, Phyllis? I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
I was finished.
Okay, um first of all, Michael didn't consider the lower level on how important that mudroom is for uh the family. But also, he didn't consider that uh Hansmeyer or sixty-six Oakdale is in their yard all day long. And Ben Mullen will be in his office theoretically all day also. Um and that's the the view and privacy concern that sixty-six would have is that he's in his office all day looking directly into his daughter's rooms and down into his yard. So strategically, uh not only that, capturing the Mount Tam view during the daytime and Christmas Tree Hill, which he has a great view of both. I mean, that's why we do these designs. That's exactly why six eighteen doesn't have a bunch of windows on that side of the house is because they want the same views on the other side of the house. So uh I mean, everybody's gonna design what they can see during the daytime to the view. So in my opinion, those are two major things that are faults with uh Michael Harlock's design. But of course, he was hired by six eighteen to produce a different design that would theoretically give them more privacy, but they're not there on that side of their yard anyways, right? Um all day and with the way that we set it back, that dormer is um twenty-six feet from their house and that house only has two bathroom windows on that side. Well, that's about as good as it gets as far as I'm concerned for privacy. I'm not looking into their living room or their dining room or anything like that. We already pulled that dormer back. I don't know if you guys saw the plan that I submitted um first, but I had that second dormer on there in order to give nice shape to the second story addition. And so it's not a giant box on top of a box. I mean, creates a nice shape and and nice architectural value, but um when it became, wh- when we submitted that, that became a major issue and we thought, hey, beyond really thinking about this design and really trying to be thoughtful by the neighbors and really setting this thing back far on that side, I was able to convince Ben and Libby that potentially we should compromise with them and get rid of that dormer. And even though it was gonna soften the design and make it not as architecturally appealing, it was something that we felt that we could do in order to try to be a good neighbor and compromise with six eighteen. So um I think that the design we put together is very thoughtful. It captures the views, it creates privacy. It creates view corridors between the two properties so that the neighbors uphill have an option uh and and can still see the view. We kept the roof lines low. I mean, we really went in and the whole reason all all this happened is is because of Ben and Libby are 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 just very, very nice people and very considerate people. And this was their intention. When when they approached me at first, they didn't even want to put a second story on because uh you know, they knew that this would be a neighborhood thing. And and as we were going through designs and options, there just isn't enough space that we could create to make them feel comfortable. We could have converted their garage into a a master bedroom and then their master bedroom would be looking out on the street, or we could have put the master bedroom in the back and then they don't have access to the backyard through their family room. There's just no good place. So uh we did the dusty.
What you have, okay, rather than what you didn't do.
All right.
As far as the privacy aspect of it. I don't think anybody is taking into consideration the angle. The upstairs window, the dormer window, is not looking straight ahead at the neighbors. I mean, if they wanted to look at the neighbors, they'd be looking down and that angle changes how much you affect privacy.
Is there a question?
As the, excuse me?
Um do you have a question for the architect?
Yeah, I like. The bathroom windows. I don't know why bathroom windows are even a consideration. I mean, if you don't, I mean, people do not use the bathrooms as viewpoints. And if they're worried about having somebody look in, they can frost the windows and put up a shade. But speaking of the dorm, is there any way to bring it back a foot maybe? Because every little bit does help. And I know that interferes with the design, but can it be moved back one foot from how much it stands out from the main line of the house on that side?
Um so when when we design that, I I I one of the interesting things, which I didn't even know, because I had never been in the neighbor's yard before until Phil told us that their their house actually sits down three feet and then there's a fence. So there's literally nine feet uh between the ground and the top of that fence. And then, of course, there's bushes and all kinds of other things on that fence to try to create even more privacy, which I didn't even know until Phil brought that to attention when we changed the shade study. So the issue is that the depth of the office is minimal. So when you walk in the office, we're trying to create seven feet, which is code in a lot of areas. I don't know if it's code in Corne Madara, but it's code in a lot of places. And the the reason we put that desk on that wall is so that it automatically steps whoever's there back two feet, which if you look at the view angle from that desk down the window past the fence, there's no view there to look into their yard. So because their houses drop down with the nine feet to the fence on the bottom bottom side, that actually works in our benefit, not against us.
David, I'm gonna ask, Phyllis asked you a question if there was a possibility of a foot and I'm hearing an answer of no, not really.
Uh I would, I would not like to to make any adjustments. I feel like we've made it a a lot of adjustments on every part of this house because Phil did such a tremendous job meeting with the neighbors. He must have met with everybody three or four times and was really an advocate for trying to bring peace and community to the neighbor and it's just it, you know, we did what we could. They, unfortunately, they're still not happy, but I think that uh we would like not to adjust anything at this point.
Got it. Uh, thank you. Uh Phyllis, anything else you want to ask?
No.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So um there are some questions that I would have for staff about some of the photographs and so forth uh that are presented in the uh staff report. Um but I think we'll go into that a little bit when after we do have public comment. So I'm sure there's gonna be plenty of commenters here tonight. So um we'll start in, uh we'll open this up. I'm gonna time every commenter to three minutes. Uh I have a a timer on my desk right here and I will be uh asking uh people to wrap it up at the end of three minutes. So that said, um I'm sure Tracy, you've got a group of people here who are hand raised.
Uh yes, we have first um Mr. Michael Harlock, followed by um Miss Fiona Young. Um if anyone would like to show their um face, you'll have to let me know so I can add you as a panelist. And that includes um Mr. Harlock, if he needs to share his screen, let me know and I'll have you join as a panelist.
All right.
Go ahead. Unmute yourself.
There you go. You're with us in spirit, Michael, but I don't know that I can, I'm not hearing anything.
You could try it, um adding him as as a panelist, maybe.
He seems to be in as a panelist on our screen.
Oh, we don't have his picture.
I don't, I think that works.
Now you're muted, Michael. Now you're not muted. But we don't hear you. Okay. Michael.
That was, that was him unmuting himself. Maybe he's having some audio problems.
Right. Okay, so uh, Michael, uh, we're gonna let you uh work it out for a minute. Your microphone is not working. So uh, let's come back to you, Michael. Uh perhaps uh you'll uh find the right button on your computer to get yourself unmuted.
I'll move to the next. That's um Fiona Young. If you'd like to show your video, um, Ms. Young, please, uh, let me know. You should be able to unmute yourself now.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Fiona. I'm here tonight to support my parents living at six eighteen Oakdale. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Uh I want to preface by saying I spent most of my childhood growing up in Corne Madara. I was a counselor for the Corne Madara Parks and Rec for nine years, actually just down the street. And something that I've always appreciated about Marin is the beautiful weather. So throughout those years and even to this day, my family and I have really loved relaxing, eating, spending time, you know, doing our basic things on the patio without needing to worry about our privacy at all. It's really never been a question. And so now I live in San Francisco and especially during the pandemic, this really was and continues to be a safe and private space for me to come together with my loved ones. So in building this very large structured window overhead, that privacy will be taken away. And furthermore, any natural sunlight we can get will be diminished by the tall dormer roof, point blank. So while we want to be in support of our neighbor's project, we do not want to lose our basic right to privacy because of the projecting office with the tall dormer roof that we've talked about before that faces our outdoor living space, our bathrooms, our indoor dining room, like we're talking about some very intimate spaces of our house here. So as neighbors, we would not want to take anyone's ability away to feel comfortable in their own own space. So I would hope that our neighbors would not want to do so either. Um but that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Fiona. All right. Mr. Harlock, are you there? Michael, do you want to try unmuting yourself? We're not hearing anything or seeing any activity from Michael, so I don't know where he stands. All right. Who else do we have?
Uh we have Mr. uh Thomas Lurson. Um you should be able to unmute yourself and please let me know if you'd like to show your video.
Uh I'm happy to show my video.
Sure, just take one moment. Um you'll rejoin us as a panelist where you can unmute yourself and show video.
Uh join as panelist? Okay.
We hear you.
Now you're muted.
And start video about now. Okay. So I just wanted to take the opportunity, oh, I'm Thomas Lurson, I live at six hundred Oakdale. And I wanted to take the opportunity to speak in support of this project. Uh uh I didn't, that's, this is totally unsolicited. I didn't know I could write a letter. I I'll do that too if necessary, but uh I just find uh that it will add value to the neighborhood and um that logically, uh when you have grow kids growing up and you have home office needs, your choices are either to make your house work or move. And I would prefer that Ben and Libby stay in the neighborhood. So that's why I'm supporting this project. That's all.
Thank you very much, Thomas.
Thank you.
All right.
Right.
Mr. Harlock has disappeared. Who else do you have for to comment on?
Uh I have um uh it says Mara Fiona, followed by Phil Borges. Go ahead and unmute yourself when you're ready, Mara, and let me know if you'd like to show a video.
Hello, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, unfortunately, I think there's the wrong identifier. This is Marie Geratana Young. And I'm Fiona's mom. And I happen to live at six eighteen Oakdale and have for the past eighteen years. My husband, my children and I really want to make it clear that we support our community's development. And we want to be supportive of home redevelopment plans that improve our community for the future. Thank you for this time today. As I mentioned, we live next door to six twenty-two. It is true that we have felt overwhelmed at the thoughts of what this buildup would mean for us and that the life we've enjoyed in our home will end. I make no bones about how distressed I have felt. This is because we are within twenty feet of the construction. We understand the project is within the parameters for development, but the impact to us is still significant and can be avoided. So we feel alternatives should be further considered. We were concerned in our first meeting in September with the Mullins by the overwhelming size of the project and what would happen to our privacy and light. We expressed those concerns at the time. We next saw the full set of plans on or around January fifth with Phil Boyle. When we finally saw the complete set of plans for the project and knowing that we had little time to better understand the plans, we consulted Mr. Harlock, an architect who we all know is well-respected in our community. You cannot know the the close proximity of our properties and the impact of the western-facing projection, which is a tall dormer roof facing our primary indoor and outdoor living space unless you enter our patio. It's not evident from the street walking by or when you're looking up at the poles. And by the way, I am working from home day in and day out as a psychiatric clinician. And during the pandemic, the areas of the dining room and like my kitchen area are where I have worked. After consulting with Mr. Harlock, we better understood that the major impact was the projecting office with the tall dormer roof. There's an all, an absolute unopposed view into both of our bathrooms through the windows looking down. And we've not had to keep our windows closed or shaded in warm weather in pleasant months when we need the fresh air circulating. We don't have AC in this house. The window is frosted because it's in the shower. There is also an unopposed view onto our patio living area. And in the evening with lights on and we're sitting outside, there's a direct view of our dining table. We're trying to find a balance here that will work for the applicants and us. We'd really like to be able to support the Mullins reservation renovation and we sincerely hope this can be a win-win situation and that both of our families' needs will be realized. Modifying the projecting office with the tall dormer roof can be a win-win for both families. And I know Mr. Harlock would like to be able to to discuss uh that further. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Marie.
And uh Dr. Howard Young is here and would also like to be able to speak.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you uh for uh allowing us to voice our concerns, even though three minutes is is not nearly enough. My name's Howard Young. I've resided at six eighteen Oakdale for eighteen years and we've uh enjoyed our property to the fullest. I'm a practicing physician and the last two years have been an extraordinary challenge in large part to the to the deniers and no-sayers of an inconvenient truth. Um coronavirus is contagious and causes illness. Now, the last four weeks have been personally even more challenging due to the deniers and no-sayers of really what's obvious of the proposed project at six twenty-two Oakdale. Um those of you who have entered into my house and looked up our bathroom windows know that when we sit on the commode, brush our teeth, do our business, there's full view. And you know, as I was getting ready for work in this morning, you know, there's, there's just no denying this reality. Um for all but two months of the year, we keep our windows open to enjoy the light and the fresh air. You know, we have a dining room, uh indoor/outdoor patio space and two bathroom windows that have direct view from the proposed build. If you have a fifteen-foot tall house that's transformed into a twenty-three and four-inch foot house and it's twenty-something feet from the house next door, you're gonna have some basic facts that can't be denied. Now, the shadow that is cast from the large house and that's projected onto the side of our house is greater than eight feet taller than the existing shadow. You you can't, it's, this is simple mathematics. You know, our house lot is three feet lower than six twenty-two Oakdale, which accentuates the effect of the morning shadow even more. Now, as far as the cursory solar studies, which uh, you know, were shared with us. Now, as far as the cursory solar studies, which, you know, were shared with us at, you know, fairly late date, you know, it's an excellent, you know, shows aerial perspective, which is really the best way to assess for the feasibility of solar panels and electricity generation. But it is not meant to evaluate for the loss of ambient light in the living areas, because what we're really talking about is the pattern of sun and shade projecting onto the wall of the houses, windows and doors, okay? These particular areas are inherently sun-deprived in our eastern part of the house. And this proposed project will deplete the ambient light further and significantly decrease the quality of our life. Now, today, the proposed southern roofline, okay, projected approximately one hour less of direct morning light. And the proposed dormer roofline projected an approximately two-hour loss of direct morning light, okay? It's very simple calculation. I'd be more than happy to show you what's involved. Now, I have no issues with the Mullins improving the quality of their life and expanding their house, you know, to suit their needs, and I really am in support of their efforts. I only ask that they make minor changes to ensure that they have their house and that the Youngs continue to have their sun and privacy. This should not be a zero-sum game. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Young. All right. Tracy, who else do we have with a hand up tonight?
Right, I was muted. We have Phil Borges. Sorry for not getting your last name right. Should be able to unmute yourself now, Phil.
I can. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thanks for the time. We just wanted to express our appreciation for the Mullins as neighbors and our support for the project. Along the same lines as Thomas Lurson alluded to earlier, that we share their space constraints. This neighborhood is typically based on fairly small housing footprints. And the necessity of having, you know, a family of, ours is a family of four, in one of, you know, what was a pretty small footprint, is very, very difficult. And we're considering ourselves, you know, what to do, you know, where to move, or whether we should stay in the neighborhood. So we've looked at their design. We think it's very considered. And as far as we're concerned, it's appropriate.
Thank you, Phil.
Looks like we have Mr. Michael Foley. Go ahead, Michael. You should be able to unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you for your time. I support Ben and Libby's second story request. I think that the people at 618 are going overboard to make it as difficult as possible. I myself have lived here 50 years and have enjoyed this neighborhood for 50 years. And do not want to see this kind of disturbance going on. I try to live here in peace and quiet with Noreen. And, you know, I think the town, I think Ben and Libby have bent over backwards to peace 618 at my expense. I'm asking for just a little view between 626 and 622. That's my whole contention, if you read the letter from my attorney. I'm trying to keep the building as close to the west side as possible, so I can enjoy a slim view to the north. Thank you for your time. I'm sorry to take it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foley.
Look, we have Ms. Cynthia Nyquist. You should be able to unmute yourself, Cynthia.
Hi, I'm across the street at 617. And I just want to thank Ben and Libby for their consideration and thoughtful design and communication with the entire neighborhood. I am supportive of the project. We didn't get a chance to send in a letter. But we look forward to the increase in property values this will bring to all of us, and just the investment in time and thoughtfulness in creating the type of community that we all want to live in. So thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia. Any sign of Mr. Harlock?
I think he's on on the phone. Let's see if I can just go ahead and see if he wants to talk on the phone. You should be able to speak, Michael, if you want to.
That's his number there that we're seeing on the screen, yeah. So he's unable to unmute himself.
If there's a button you have to push, I think you push. Sorry, Chair Chase. Try star six, Michael, if you want to talk.
This is unfortunate that Mr. Harlock is having trouble here. I wish that we had a way to include him here at this moment. I see he's popped up on another screen.
That was me, just in case this microphone's working now.
Michael, send us a signal. Not working. I don't know what to say here. Do we have any other hands up by anybody?
No, Chair Chase. No answer up.
Michael, I don't know what the confounding issue is, but we'll come back to you if at all possible here for this meeting. So I did want to ask Mr. Boyle if he has the photos from the staff report of the from the neighboring yard. Do you have any of those that you could put on screen?
I do, Chairman Chase. I have the entire staff report I could bring up. Are you speaking?
I'm thinking about 615 Oakdale and Seven Manzanita Court in the F report. They're very hard to see.
Yes, I can bring those up right here. So you said 615, 615 Oakdale. Start with that one?
Yeah.
Sure, let's see. Okay, sharing screen. So can you see my screen there?
Yeah.
Yes.
So just to orient people, 615 Oakdale is, if you go directly across the street and then down two doors to the east, I'm sorry, to the west, you're at 615 Oakdale. And this is a view, I was able to go inside the home, it's under renovation. So this is a view from the living room, looking east. Yeah, I'm looking east, I'm not looking straight out, and the story poles are here. This is, this is 618 story poles, and this is 626. So this is living room, looking east at roughly 45-degree angle. This is a kitchen window, looking slightly east. The story poles are in there. And then this is front porch, again, looking slightly east. Again, if one looks directly north, one doesn't see the house at all. If one looks west, Christmas Tree Hill in Mount Tam. And so story poles are here. This is on the front porch. And then lastly, this is looking from the walk, very close to the front, you know, two steps out the front door, looking directly north.
Okay.
And then, that's from their back, and that's from the back patio. Story poles are here.
All right, okay.
Seven, Seven Manzanita, which is down the hill, is here. This, behind and down from the project, this is from the backyard of Seven Manzanita, looking up, quite heavily vegetated. Can't even really see the story poles. And then here, this is looking, this is from the project site of 626 Oakdale, and looking down into Seven Manzanita. And again, there's that tree we were looking at before. This is the lower backyard of Seven Manzanita. This is a kind of the front yard driveway area.
Okay.
And then lastly.
Sorry, I don't, I'm sure I can't interrupt, but where did you take that picture from? Is that from the edge of their yard, or is that from the, is that from the house? Because it looks like it's from the edge of the yard.
Yeah, so there's two levels of 626, sorry, 622's backyard. They have a lower backyard where this one is taken from, and then they have what are called upper backyard, which is where this one is taken from.
So that's from the yard, not the, not the actual house?
Correct, both from the yard.
Got it.
All right, Phil, thank you. I just wanted a little more context surrounding those, yeah, all right. Tracy, any sign of Mr. Harlock?
Yes. Ms. Young has him on her cellphone, and she can just put him on speaker and can be heard through her connection. That's okay, y'all.
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead, Ms. Young, if you have, do you have Michael Harlock on cellphone?
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yeah?
Hello?
Who's that speaking? Yes, is that Mr. Harlock?
Hi, no, sorry. My name is George Quercinis, and I am the husband of Mara Jaratana Young, one of the children of Marie and Howard, who currently live at 618. I just, I just wanted to speak on their behalf and say that, you know, I know Marie and Howard have personally tried to make accommodations. And ultimately, the properties that impact 622's building are 618 and 626. And these are the two properties whose homeowners should matter most when they're voicing their concerns. I'd like to ask for a couple of things. I know David Graham mentioned that, you know, the other architect only spent five or 10 hours, and mentioned that he himself spent 400 hours researching this project. I'd like to ask him to substantiate himself for 100 hours. Seems like a lot of time to spend on this project. And so, you know, I'd appreciate if he could substantiate this claim. Further, I'd like to point out that the two hours loss of sunlight during the sun study, while, you know, the Mullins pointed this out, the initial rendering that they provided to my in-laws didn't even include their house. So, you know, and even when they didn't include their house, it wasn't even put on the different level, which wouldn't have shown that the full level of the sunlight impact. So there's, there's been some not clear guidance, I think, from the Mullins. There's been a disingenuous point here. And then the last thing I'd like to point out is that I'd like to ask Phyllis Metcalfe to recuse herself from any vote involving this planning decision. It's clear that she has a bias against the residents of 618. You could hear it in her tone and mentioning that bathroom windows should simply be frosted. I find that claim, quite honestly, very baseless and ridiculous. So I ask that her vote count in no way towards the resolution of this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Has any, has Mr. Harlock showed up in any way? Phyllis will address.
I would like to respond to the young man.
We will eventually. I just want to get the public comment. Thank you. We'll get to this.
I think this should be Marie Young's name here, the Mara Fiona, and that should be Mr. Harlock. I gave her instructions to call him and raise her hand, which she hasn't, so.
And I would also just, if this doesn't work, Michael, I've emailed him, he's free to call me. I can do the same, so we don't run into a similar sort of issue here. But I'm happy to, you know, have Michael call me. I just tried calling him at the number that was in the Q and A, and it went straight to voicemail. So I couldn't get a hold of him.
Okay, let's try it. Okay.
Ms. Young, you should be able to unmute yourself if you have Mr. Harlock with you. Can you hear?
Yes.
Okay, this is Michael. This is Michael Harlock. And I'm, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Wow, okay. I'm so, so sorry for the complication. I have no idea what happened. I've never had Zoom do this before. Anyway, so I know I have three minutes. I will be brief. I appreciate that David's comments, we work together, I think they're excellent builders. So I wanted to return that compliment. We were asked to take a look at impacts to see if there was something that could be done with the proposed plan to mitigate the worst impact. And in looking at the plan, it appeared that it could modestly, with the same square footage, the same rooms, and the same basic arrangement to eliminate the office dormer, as Phyllis suggested. Really easy idea to reverse the office and the closet, which is logically at the end of the hallway. And we did reverse the stairway because in my experience with a lot of these second stories, it's centered the middle of the plan and go towards either end, in this case, the media room or the master bedroom. On circulation work better for 622. We thought the office was larger, and we thought the bathroom was more consolidated, while at the same time, it solved the basic problem that privacy and sunlight that the Youngs were having. So that pretty much summarizes, obviously. We did not, we were called in to do a quick study, and we did that. We thought that was worth presenting, and of course, nobody can dictate the clients. I wouldn't appreciate that either if I was, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be presuming to impose a plan, except that we thought that it was worth talking about. That's all I have right now, unless there's questions.
Thank you very much, Michael.
I'm so sorry again for the confusion.
Okay, that ends Mr. Harlock's statement. Is there anybody else that has popped up with a hand up?
No, Chair Chase.
Do you have any email commentary in it, @publiccomment@dcmaile.org?
No, Chair Chase.
Okay. So I'm going to then close the public comment section of this item, take it back to the commission. Mr. Grabham has his hand up, as does Phyllis. Mr. Grabham, I ask you to exercise brevity in your response here, if you may, please.
Thank you, Peter. I just wanted to point out one thing on those calls. When Phil put together his staff report, there was a couple of people who actually changed their support for the project from negative to positive. I don't know if anybody else caught that, but two of the people on the negative side now support the project because of the additional concessions we made. And I just wanted to point that out, that the Youngs and their family, I appreciate, you know, I'm um, the Youngs and their family, I appreciate, you know, I'm a family man myself, and their support for each other, but it sounds like pretty much all the other neighbors are in support of the projects. Just wanted to point that out, thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Um, all right, Phyllis, I know you're, uh.
I have several things to say. First of all, to George, whose last name I did not get. Uh, you're entitled to your own opinion, but not your own facts. I was discussing views from bathroom windows. It had nothing to do with any prejudice against any individuals. So I think you should just step back and let us take care of our work. While this was going on, I was doing some sketching of my own, and I get Michael's gone, but David. There is a way you could do this without flipping it over. If you look at page eight two point three of the plans, do you have them in front of you?
I do.
Okay, are you ready? The closet is quite large. It could be made smaller where you've got that line going across, I don't know what it's supposed to represent where hangers are, or something like that. If the closet was reduced to that size, what it is doing is moving the hallway over. Then the office can be worked back to fill in that area next to it, and the hallway would go around above. Jim, you're an architect too. Are you following what I'm saying, if you're looking at the plans?
Yeah, I'm following what you're saying, Phyllis, uh.
And I think that would settle a lot of the problems. You still have your view, the dormer is gone, it's, you know, you've moved it back a couple of feet in line with where the stairway wall is. You've got the smaller closet, and you just really change the shape of the, uh, hallway. Cause the hallway is done in two separate sections, and this actually is more of a nexus to them.
Right, okay.
And, uh, that would solve all the problems and all the hard feelings. George could stop being nasty, and the Youngs would then not have the, um, dormer looming over them, at least that's how they feel it is. Because I do think, because the second story is so much higher than where the patio is because of the angle. If you look at geometry, it is not looking straight ahead and blocking privacy, it is below enough, you're not going to sit there and go like, you know, look down, you're looking ahead. But that, if the Mullins would be willing to do that, they would still have, you know, all they would be losing is part of the closet, and the closet's very large, that they could, you know, lose, you know, two feet along there and, or three feet, and move back the office, and still have the same sized office.
All right. Since we're into, uh, the commissioner dialogue part of this here, uh, Phyllis, uh, do you have any other sort of, uh, comments on the project?
Well, I was trying to find comedy between the neighbors, and find a way where their needs can be met, both, you know, both sets of neighbors. And I just, as I say, I do not feel, and I've said this before in other projects, that I think, and I know this from people and other planning commissions, that people make a big issue at a views from bathroom windows, and, um, I don't think that's an important, uh, important thing for us to worry about. It's more important the views from other rooms from the patio, from the dining room, from the living room. And as I say, if people are concerned about losing their privacy in their bathrooms, there are ways to take care of that.
Okay. Um, I want to ask, I want to get some preliminary feedback here from other commissioners. Uh, not that this is the final round of commentary and discussion, but I want to start with you, Dr.
Peter, before I further, can I have a response from the Mullins or their?
Well, I want to see what other people have to say, us, the other commissioners.
You know, how they respond to the movement I talked about.
Yeah, right, okay. Dr. Bundy.
Well, I, I guess I would wonder if this would be an appropriate time for David to respond to Phyllis's comments, and then we can go from there.
Well, I would like to see that we, as, uh, commissioners, all respond to what Phyllis has to say. Uh, I want to see if there's any support for that with the other commissioners. Or if you feel that the project is, is acceptable as is, or is unacceptable as it is. I don't know what that might be.
Well, I guess I was saying, is this something that, uh, you know, David felt could be modified? Or do, uh, you know, Ben and Libby and David want to just go forward with the project they presented for us to, uh, thumbs up or thumbs down on?
Okay, well, being that you're reluctant to go further with that, then I will go back and ask, uh, David and Ben and Libby how they feel about this, so.
Um, Phyllis, thank you so much for your suggestion. Um, carefully, the way that we design is all through furnishing and space, uh, trying to create spaces that are very furnishable, and if I move that hallway over, um, it does several things. It creates a large hall next to the stairs, shortens the closet substantially. Uh, but even worse than that, i- it actually shortens the TV wall, which, as you can see, is only eleven feet nine. So we furnished everything back toward that wall, so that the couch, uh, could actually furnish in the room. So if I flip that hall, then I'm basically kind of throwing a bunch of dead space in and making the living room even smaller, even though it's, it's big. So that was the intention behind the design in the first place is, um, to create that living room space as you walk up the stairs and then turn down the hall, as trying to keep that as tight as possible. The closet size, uh, is designed in order to be a master suite, uh, with a large closet. So, I, i- in the, in the office actually is designed to be the minimum size, which is seven feet by code, um, depth, so we kind of hit those parameters the best that we could in the jigsaw puzzle with keeping the addition, like I said, as narrow as possible and as long as possible in order to, to give the neighbors up the hill the, the corridor view, so, um, I, I don't think that's possible.
It is possible if you leave the TV wall and then work around the TV wall. You don't have to cut out the length of the TV wall.
Um, but, but then you have a big space between, you, you're just creating a lot more hallway between the stairs and, and the wall, and you lose nine feet of hanging, which is actually their double hanging, so it's actually eighteen lineal feet of hanging you'd be removing from their closet. A- and like I said, I'm happy to make adjustments. We've been making adjustments for the last three months. I just feel like we've kind of plateaued on our adjustments, and everything is, is very tight and as narrow as we could make it, um, with getting that hallway through there.
Uh, you wouldn't have an extra wide hallway by moving it because the office would be moving into the space. Looks like you have a door over there. Is that correct for me? When you leave the stairway and start going towards the master bedroom, it looks like there is a wall, the door. Or is that a, what do you?
Yeah, that's a door to the masters, or to the primary suite, excuse me. By the stairs, you mean?
Yes, of, it's the, um, looking at the plans, the right-hand office wall extension.
Well, we're sort of devolving into design, uh, here, and I don't want to, uh, go down this road. This is, uh, too arduous and too difficult, so, uh, I'm going to say.
Well, if he can visualize what I'm saying, he's not going to end up with an extra wide hall, and there are ways to, I mean, you've got to move that bit to the closet, it should be easy to move.
All right, I'm going to say that we got to move on to other commentary here, and, and, uh, we'll take that under advisement as a part of, as a possibility of, uh, change to the, to the design. So, Bob, do you want to continue with any commentary?
Uh, yeah, that's, that's helpful, because what I understand is that, uh, they want to go with the, uh, plan that they presented. Uh, you know, I think it's, it's unfortunate that, uh, Ben and Libby have, uh, come to the table late, because, you know, the neighbors, uh, on both sides now have their second stories, and they've had to work with David to create a second story that, uh, you know, dealt with what's already in existence, uh, what has been added to, uh, both the houses in the neighborhood. On top of that, it's difficult because of the lot and the narrowness of the lot, uh, that, uh, makes integrating, uh, second stories more difficult. I think, you know, David had done a nice job of doing that with, uh, breaking up the, the mass and such. And I do hear that a lot of compromises were made for all of, all of the neighbors, and, you know, this is a balancing act that we've got at this point. Uh, I think removing the front dormer, uh, probably was the most invasive from the standpoint of privacy, and by removing that, uh, they've, uh, been able to, uh, really, uh, limit the impact of the, uh, privacy. The, uh, dormer that's on the office, if that was a dormer that was on the, um, if that was a dormer that was on the, uh, master bedroom, I would feel that people being able to walk up to that, look down, would be, uh, a true invasion of privacy. Uh, so I spent a lot of time thinking particularly about the patio and the, uh, sliding, sliding, uh, doors and the table that's there, and what that impact is going to be on privacy. They're certainly going to see this structure above them. You know, they're going to feel that their privacy has, that they've had for the last eighteen years has been dramatically changed. But I think ultimately, this is a small office, and, you know, this room, you know, as part of a master suite, is only either going to be used as an office or potentially a nursery or storage. It's not going to be a, a bedroom where, uh, this, uh, window is going to be accessible for viewing, uh, to any extent. And I think that the actual impact on privacy as far as looking down, uh, is not going to really impact them. It is going to be an impact from the standpoint that it's going to be there, they never saw it before. I do think that some further mitigation from the standpoint of, uh, plantings on both sides of the fence could limit the effect of that, I would hope in the long run. But, um, you know, ultimately, I think, uh, they've, they've made some compromises to, to help the neighbors. Uh, I know the Youngs don't feel that this is enough of a compromise, and this is still a problem, but, uh, I can make the findings that, uh, I don't feel that there's a significant impact on privacy, uh, views or sunlight.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Bundy. Uh, Mr. Rizzo.
Um, well, I think, you know, uh, David couldn't do much more with the design as far as, uh, moving the, the height impacts and with the roof, you know, utilizing a long, long thin volumes and, uh, hip roofs and, and short floor-to-ceiling heights. Um, and you kind of put it in the middle, the, the back in the middle, away from the street, set back from the street. So I think that they did a really good job of trying to mask this thing the best they could with two houses, uh, on either side, uh, two stories. I do think, uh, to six twenty-six is definitely the most impacted, um, uh, as far as their views standing in there. Um, I had an opportunity to stand in the bedrooms and the bathrooms over there, and, uh, it would seem to me that trying to flip the plan would, would definitely impact that neighbor even more than it would, it would impact six eighteen. Um, I, I think my question about the, about the sill heights, because, um, I mean, the programming's fine. I, I was just wondering why the sill height was so low, uh, just because the view is really above, above the roof, not necessarily at the roof. And I didn't know if there was an opportunity to raise that sill height, because you're not really viewing anything um, other than a roof. Um, without changing dramatically the design, uh, there's also an opportunity, I think, to maybe add a larger window to the north in that same room, because you can enjoy that beautiful unobstructed view of, to the, to the north. But, um, all in all, I, you know, when we look at our, when we look at the findings, um, and then we look at the general plan, um, you just, you know, we're just, we're, we're supposed to design, uh, to try to mitigate very significant or adverse privacy and, and, or sunlight impacts, and, and and I, I, I don't know what else this, uh, the designer could do to, uh, limit that even having a window. Um, even if that wasn't a dormer and that was a window, and it was two or three feet back, um, you know, the houses are close together, and it, and, and my neighborhood, there are houses that are, that are six feet apart, um, and they're two stories. So, um, there's definitely situations where people are more impacted. Um, I also feel like, uh, the, the, the room in the back, which is going to be most utilized, uh, during the night, and, um, uh, it's got windows that you could step up to, and, and it seems that everybody's okay with the, the family room the way it is, and it seems to be closer to the patio area than the bay window. Um, if I would looked at the shadow study, it, it seemed like the, the bay, the bay window of the office was maybe, I, I don't know, I'm not as familiar with the, with the numbers, but it definitely was further away than, than the family room window, um, as far as impacts go, and nobody said anything about that, um, at least in this, in this hearing. So, I mean, all in all, I, I, you know, I, I, I think I can make the findings to, to move this forward, but I, I, I do think that there's an opportunity to raise that window sill and gain a little bit more privacy and, and actually not look into someone's roof. I, I think there's, you're looking into someone's roof. Uh, from those pictures, um, uh, that the Mullins had showed, uh, you could still get that beautiful view of Mount Tam and, and Christmas Tree Hill with just a, a little bit taller of a, of a sill to the, to the west there. But, um, other than that, um, I think the stairs in the, in the right location, the mudroom, if they've got young kids, they're going to need that room. Um, I like the fact that they're going to get, get a parking space back by moving the office up above. Um, so it does solve a, a lot of problems. Um, I don't really know where else they could put the office in, in this particular floor plan. So, that's what I have to say.
Thank you, Jim, very much. Um, Margaret, um, you're, you're patiently waiting there.
Good.
Please, um.
Um, I, my initial feeling at looking at this is that there, there's a lot of space being added here. And why, um, as the architect said, you can't move the jigsaw pieces a little more, um, uh, to accommodate the fact that, uh, that dormer is just hanging out from the side of the house. I don't understand, right now, as I'm looking at it, the master closet is bigger than the office. And I think that if you just have the office where the master closet is, the, the, um, the thing that bothers me a little is the Mullins um, are creating a view at the expense of someone's privacy and shade. And I was there, and I stood in that, uh, patio area, and I looked up and I saw the, the way the, um, story poles were, and I think that when you're standing there in that small space, the Mullen, the, um, Youngs have a very small little patio there, it's not large, and I think they should be can, allowed to continue to take full advantage of it the way they have all th- these years. As I said, I think there's so much space added here that I don't see why it can't be rearranged and moved around. And I have a feeling it's, no one wants to move it because it creates a view of Mount Tam, which is lovely to have, but it's not fair to do it at someone else's expense. That's all I have to say right now.
Okay. Thank you, Margaret. Um, Phyllis, do you want to add to any of your commentary?
As I say, I I care about, I'm concerned about the effect on the Youngs, on the patio, their dining room. And the privacy they feel and as I say, I'm not, the bathrooms are not a concern of mine. And I still think there are ways to move back that closet wall. And I could sit here and sketch it out. And move back the office, have the same size office and get rid of the dormer. And that would help. But we heard the architect for the Mullen speak. We didn't hear from the Mullins whether or not they would accept making some internal changes. Leaving the closet where it is, leaving the office on the side of the building, they wish to have it, not flipping it over, as I thought it first could be a possibility. And whether they would be willing to look into making some internal changes to make the closet smaller and move back the office.
Sorry, would you like us to respond?
Yes.
Yes, you may.
Because you're going to live there, not David Graham.
Yeah, sorry, we're just.
We don't know what our the process in terms of when our.
Well, normally we don't, but before I comment, I'm going to ask you to comment on this. Please go ahead.
Sure, yeah, I and so for first, I think the photo that we showed of flipping it to the eastern side, the office to the eastern side. I think it's clear that that wouldn't be an option, at least it seems that would be clear, that would be incredibly invasive to the Hansmiers. I'm afraid I don't have spatial brain. I've been trying to like sketch out what you've been saying. Paper, I don't have the capacity to do that right now. But I will say that sort of to what Commissioner Rizzo was saying. If you pull, the view is out and up. So if you pull the space back.
Well, that's not what I said. I I didn't mean to, I didn't want to change the office at all.
Oh, no.
I was saying, change, change the window sill height to the west to gain a little bit more privacy and kind of eliminate some of the view of the roof and maintain your roof, your beautiful view of Mount Tam.
Right, I'm sorry, I misspoke. What I was saying is that you 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 pointed out that the view that we want is the out and up view, sorry.
Correct, I was trying to not to change your design, just kind of make a recommendation on the window, window height heights. And and also the possibility of embellishing on the view to the north if there was an opportunity to gain more view that way. That's all I'm, I didn't want you to change, I wasn't making that recommendation.
And I think something that might be helpful to to illustrate this is that. So I can't answer your question right now. I think David will have to answer that as far as like spatially moving it. But what I can say is that for for two reasons that come to mind. If we move it back two or three feet, the objective of the view remains the same, which is it's out and up. Not going to be a position that we're going to be looking down. I hear what you're saying that that may make that feel as if there's less of a privacy infringement. I I think that what we've tried to do to make it clear is that the reality is that there though they may feel it's a privacy infringement, there is not a substantial one. We I took a picture from the roof that looks like imagining if you were standing at the window and looking towards their patio. And I'm happy to share that with you to to illustrate what the vegetation already does to to promote their privacy, if you think that's helpful. But again, that's not a position that we would ever take. We would not be like standing on the window and looking down onto their patio. So it's not like we are entrenched and we're stubborn people that don't want to make compromise. I think we've shown that we're really trying, we've always tried to work with the neighbors. I hate that 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 I'm coming, my impulse is to say no to this idea of moving the closet. Because I worry that that makes you feel as though I'm being stubborn and entrenched. But I that for the needs of our family, Ben needs to have an office, he needs to have a door. We want to have a space for closet. This is an investment for us. We all know the real estate market right now, master closets add a lot of value to the home. Taking away, I don't have that many clothes, but you know, 30 years from now, somebody probably is going to have a lot of clothes that they want to put in that closet. So we're trying to think of it, not only to something to fit our needs, but also an investment. Again, I'm happy to share a picture of what it would look like if you're standing in the window, trying to look in the courtyard. As was alluded to by somebody, I can't remember what it is, I think it was you, Dr. Bundy. We are happy to add more vegetation too.
And and we're happy to move the window up. I mean, I think when I got up there and took that picture, I agree. It's like I realized, I mean, I was looking at the roof, right? And we don't need to look at the roof. And so moving that window up a foot, that seems very reasonable. And I don't think we came into this meeting thinking that the Youngs would support us. But we were hoping that they might leave, being able to tolerate. You know, I think the idea that we've made concessions and that we were willing to make a concession that fit our design plan as it is. And reducing the size of the window, we think, sounds like a really good idea.
It sounds good.
All right. Thank you, David, quickly.
Yeah, just a couple of things. Margaret, for just wanted to jump back to your comment where we we actually showed the picture and the impact on the Hansmeyer 626, which is why the closet isn't designed there. And by the way, that closet is double stacked on all the interior for the sheer wall tied down to the foundation. Which is one of the reasons that that closet is so big. I have it stacked on the stair wall and the TV wall, which is where I'm going to pull my internal sheer walls down. So it was, it was also a strategic thing that allows me to engineer it easier and build it for less money. And then Phyllis, the the privacy issue out of the office is not into the courtyard. That's into their backyard in the in the bathroom windows. So reducing the office doesn't change anything with the courtyard. The office viewed windows are toward the view, not toward the courtyard. I just wanted to throw those couple of points out there. And we already said the window is at three foot six. If we raise it, it'll be four feet. So four feet off the ground, which is a pretty high window. I know Ben said we would be happy to raise it a foot. That's who they are, they're really nice people and want to accommodate. But then he's sitting at his desk at a four foot window, a desk is 32 inches. That puts the top of the window one foot, one foot whatever above his desk. And I agree, James, lifting the window and catching that higher view is great. It's just that three foot six is already pretty high off the ground. And when we put those windows in, we matched all our header heights for architecturally, so that they kind of look consistent. But I'm happy to to work with you guys. I think that vegetation and additional planting of green wall or something like that would be our best path forward if possible. And thank you for letting me speak again, Peter, sorry.
Okay, all right. So I'm going to say that what I have observed here is that this plan has grown organically. And I think it has resulted in an optimal layout, given the time and effort that have gone into morphing it from the various inputs from neighbors. I think it's a good plan. I do think that the, that there is no view from the office down into that courtyard patio. So I think in all, overall, the project is handsomely designed. I think it's appropriate. And I think that they've made concessions to the neighbors to make it fit in very well. So in short, and trying to be short here, I can make the findings for this application as it as it sits right now. So Phyllis, you've you've heard from the applicant there about these changes. And you know, I know what you feel about the plan, that it could be morphed into something else. But they've they've stated their case.
As I said, I was just trying to create some comedy between them and their neighbors. And what the possibilities are. And if it's something that they cannot deal with, and I agree, when you look out that office window, you're not looking down into the patio. And and you're not looking into, you know, what is on the lower level. And the further back you are, you know, depending upon the depth of the desk, the less you will see down. Your eye level goes out. So I mean, if this is it, you know, as I say, I was seeing if there was something that was could possibly suit both, and it doesn't seem to be.
So if the if the window sill height was raised to a four foot level. Then there's a foot between a desktop and the bottom of a window.
Right.
That doesn't seem egregious to me.
Me neither.
Yeah, right. Other commissioners, Dr. Bundy.
We're discussing the height of the sill.
Right, yeah.
I guess I would would leave that to the applicants and their designer.
Okay.
I would support that if that fit.
All right, okay.
I mean, if if you could see it at four feet, you're going to see it at 42 inches. It's it, you know, so again, I'd leave the, I'd leave it to the designer. If it wasn't going to be a more significant move, then it's not going to, it's not going to make much of a difference. Right, so if if all the commissioners feel like you can't see directly down into that into that space, I mean, that's what we're talking about is the privacy of that of the of their living space.
Right. I think that Dr. Bundy made an appropriate comment. And that is that it they may at 618, they may feel like it's a privacy invasion. When in fact, there is no one looking down in there, but that that can't be avoided. And I know how it feels to have the idea that someone is looking into your yard, but they're not actually looking into your yard. So I do know that for a fact. So with that said, I'm going to check in with you guys one more time or ask for a motion on this.
But before you do that, Director Commissioner Chase, may I make a suggestion?
Yes.
There's been a great deal of back and forth between commissioners and the applicant and their representative, which is a bit unusual for this commission. In the interest of being completely fair and above board, perhaps you would like to give the the Youngs an opportunity to comment on what they've heard so far. So I would suggest you open the public hearing for the limited purpose of allowing the Youngs to respond. In particular, the proposal to raise the sill, if that's what seems to be on the table.
Okay, that's a good suggestion.
But is it on the table? I thought it wasn't on the table.
Well, I'm putting it on the table.
All right. Chairman Chase.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so that said, let's open this back up for the Youngs to comment since the Mullins have commented and everybody else has done so. So Tracy, can you see anyone from that?
I I don't know which Youngness is, but one of them has a hand up and you may speak and unmute yourself.
Excuse me, hi, this is George Corsonis again, Mara's husband and son in law of the Youngs. I guess, I think Howard and Marie probably need to respond. But from what I've heard, I appreciate all the accommodations and I think it's really great that the Mullins are willing to work with the Youngs. I guess the two questions that I have is number one, like, could somebody please substantiate? How looking down from the window won't look into the patio? This is a simple matter of physics that that could get worked out. So far, I haven't seen any proof that looking down through the window actually wouldn't look into the backyard. And the second thing that I'll point out is that, you know, the two hour loss of sunlight on that patio. I go up there with my wife Mara during the summer, we live in San Francisco and I have so for the past 12 years. And we enjoy that back patio, two hours of sunlight in the summer over an eight hour day represents 25 to 30% of the sunlight that you get on that back patio. So you know, even though the solar study may show that there's quote unquote minimal impact, I would argue that this is quite high impact on that back patio. And I don't feel that this has been appropriately, you know, accounted for. The last thing I'll say, you know, I know David Graham has has mentioned that he talked about altering the design on the ground level, taking out the garage or potentially bumping out the backyard. And and mentioning that this would inconvenience his client, Mahalins. What I would ask is, you know, given that this second story is inconveniencing the the Youngs, what balance was taken to approach, you know, the second story versus the first story? I myself am a professional engineer for 15 years. I understand all about compromise. And it sounds like most of the compromises have been made in favor of the Mahalins 622 and 626 with minimal input from 618. So I would, I'm going to relinquish the rest of my time and let Marie and Howard respond. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Okay, who is going to speak?
I see a hand raised, but there you go, one moment. Go ahead and unmute yourself when you're ready.
So I think what we're, where we are right now is is that we've heard you know, a willingness on the part of Margaret and Phyllis to acknowledge that there's the issue of you know, for 18 years now, we haven't felt as though we have had a level of intrusion on our living space, which is a very small area that that we can enjoy. We don't have the north facing patio area that Ben and Libby have. We have, you know, really created a contiguous flow between the dining room, kitchen area onto our patio. And the overwhelming sense of that dormer. You know, when we're sitting outside, just looking up and knowing that the poles are just one you know, one piece of this puzzle, when it's built, it's going to be a very aggressive buildup with a lot of bulk that is looking out at us. And I would feel so much more comfortable, as I said in my remarks. And would be very happy to support this project if I if I felt as though there was the concession around understanding this is our living area. Like Ben, I am home all the time, I work from home. And I need to be able to go outside and have meetings. And I need to be able to come in and move, you know, smoothly between the indoor outdoor area. As I've enjoyed for, you know, such a a long time now. Who's to say that we wouldn't put windows up on our eastern side? We didn't build this elevation. I you know, it has always been our intention to remodel our second floor to better accommodate our growing family. And we can, you know, reconfigure that area. We suffer for light in this house. And I would heartily say that, you know, I would support and I would promote what they wanted if we can just do something with that dormer. It's it's really overwhelming to to me and to Howard and to our kids. And 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 I think to say that nobody's going to look out the window. Well, we know that the family room, the TV room, people could look out there and look down on us. But that's our compromise. We're not going to offer any complaint about that or the windows. that's our compromise. We're not going to offer any complaint about that or the windows that are associated with the master. You know, it's it's really our yard. There's going to be a very nice view right down into our yard. You probably see the deck off of our master bedroom quite easily. So, you know, the what we're asking for is that the the dormer roof, it when it's, you know, eaved and it's large and it's wood and it's solid, it is going to be overwhelming. And, you know, I think that whether one stands up or sits down or whatever, it's still, it feels intrusive and there is a view right out onto our roof.
Thank you, Marie. All your the time is up.
I would like to add something.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
May I make some comments?
Yes.
You know, I've heard I've heard Ben and Libby and the architect, actually, he's not architect, he's a designer. You know, speak on and on and on about the most compromise they made.
Go easy.
You know, if you want to borrow a million dollars, what you do is you ask for five million. Okay, so here you have a massive buildup on top of the house. And then you whittle it a little bit and claim that you're making compromise. And yet, we're the ones that really have a lot to lose, you know, our our privacy and our living and our sunlight. I'm sorry, but.
How to live through the construction?
Well, the construction is another matter, but, you know, I'd be willing to compromise on on the other dormer, you know, I mean, we're not opposed to you having your view of Mount Tam and, you know, from your living room. I mean, that's wonderful. It really is. But please do not look down on us like we're the minions from, you know, the White Castle. It's that's the feeling that we have with this with this very aggressive build. And that's all I had to say. I'm not personally against you guys, but I really resent, you know, the intrusion of of our life. And I'm sorry, that's how I feel.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else, Tracy, that has stuck their hand up now that we opened public comment? I don't see any. Okay, so we'll close public comment. On this matter. So Mullins and David, you've heard from the neighbors about their feelings toward this dormer and their frightened feelings about that dormer and so forth. I will ask if you have any impetus to move this differently than what you've proposed.
Like to move forward as it is. I think it's clear that even positioning the window wouldn't be seen as as a compromise. And we would like to go forward with the plan as it is, please.
All right. Okay, so the window sill height has not been addressed by anybody in particular. So I'm going to say that we don't need a window sill height adjustment. Given the fact that we all, I think we think that the view is out and up, not downward. Unless somebody sticks their hand up in the air and says, we need to consider that window sill height up to four foot. No, okay. All right, so we're back to where we were before. We can either make a motion to approve it as it's proposed or make a motion to amend the resolution with modifications. Phyllis?
Just a thought. Would it be to everyone's advantage if we continued this for two weeks and gave the two sets of neighbors a chance to talk back and forth and just bring it back? And maybe in two weeks, we would approve it as it exists right now, or they may come up with some change?
I think that that would be. Well, I'm going to ask the other commissioners and that and particularly that of the applicant and the architect. I don't think that that would benefit us, but.
Well, it's not to our benefit. It's to the benefit of the applicants and what they're going to live with.
So she said, and I'm speaking for you, Libby, you know, that you would like to move forward with it as it is. But, you know, that what Phyllis is proposing is that you would actually sit down with the Youngs and and try to work out a different proposal.
And Phyllis would very much appreciate that sentiment. I mean, we we I I know it's this is the first time you've met us. This is the first time that you've seen us in any sort of environment. And then it's over Zoom over a contentious thing like this. We've done, I I feel genuinely and serenely sincerely that we have done a lot to compromise. I think they're asking for us to remove Ben's office entirely. They're not asking for like a shift of of things. They want the dormer to be removed. And that would drastically affect our livelihood. So I don't want to take up any more of your time. I wish I wish wholeheartedly that I felt that two weeks would come to a compromise conclusion. I don't think it will. And I hate to say that we are good neighbors, as I hope you heard from the other ones that were calling in. I'm just trying to be as honest as possible. And I'm sorry, Phyllis, and I appreciate your concern very much.
I share the sentiments of my wife. I don't I don't think two weeks is going to just anywhere more productive.
Well, you know, I think that one of the lessons that I've learned from this role is that we like to think that people get heard, and I don't feel like the Youngs feel like they've been heard. But I feel like I listen to them, and I think that I also listen to you, the applicant. One of the roles of the commission is to listen to everybody, and I think we've done that tonight. But I'm going to look to either Dr. Bundy or Mr. Rizzo to see if either one of them will make a motion for this.
Well, I just wanted to to add the comment that, you know, I've I've listened to the Youngs and I know that from being on the commission for a number of years, that individuals that have lived in a home had sort of unrestricted use of a patio, a view, you know, access. And the sense of that being lost because of the structure is palpable and people really feel that. But I feel in looking at the totality of this and the, you know, the design of the building with breaking up the mass, the dormer helps to do that. And I don't believe that the dormer is really going to actually impact privacy beyond the the real palpable sense that it may be visible up there unless we can get enough vegetation growing to cover that up, which I think can happen. So I I support the project. I don't have the number in front of me to make make the proposal.
Okay, Mr. Rizzo?
I can make the findings as well. Are you looking for me to make the motion?
Yes, please.
I gotta get my, I'm on my computer, Bob. I gotta I gotta scroll down here to the paper.
I can give you the number if you want, Jim.
I got a frozen computer.
So it's a design review application number PL two oh two one zero zero seven nine.
You can't make the motion as chair.
No, I know.
Can I?
If you want me to, I mean, I will make the motion to get it on the floor. That's.
Okay, please do so. I'm sorry. I don't have the papers that ran out and I'm scrolling.
Let me just get to the page. Got two pages stuck together. Here we go. In the matter of design review application PL dash two zero two one dash zero zero seven nine for a nine hundred and forty five square foot second level addition and modifications to an existing single story home at six twenty two Oakdale Avenue, resolution number two two dash zero zero seven. The adoption date would be this date. And I will move that.
Okay, so then we have a second from somebody, please.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll take the role, starting with Commissioner Rizzo.
Yes.
Commissioner Bendel?
No.
Commissioner Bundy?
Yes.
Vice Chair McCaff?
Yes.
And Chairman Chase?
Yes.
Okay. Phil, do you want to read the appeal rights?
I guess I will. Thank you. All decisions by the planning commission can be appealed within ten calendar days of today. Applications for appeal are available on the town's website and at the new location of town hall. And there's a three hundred dollar five and fee to file an appeal.
And does this include the carport to garage to remove the storage room?
Yes.
That's in this open. Okay.
Okay, so thank you all very much. I'm going to say that we take a short break here.
Yes.
And we'll be back in a few minutes.
Um, Commissioner, I might remind you that we now have sixteen minutes until ten o'clock. So perhaps before you break, you might want to extend the meeting?
Commissioners, do we have a motion to extend the meeting to ten thirty?
I'll move to extend it to thirty.
Okay. All right.
All in favor?
I, all right. Thank you very much. We're going to take a ten minute recess. We'll be back here at five to ten. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you all so much for your time in in viewing our project and in the comments and helping us work through this situation, especially you, Phil, for for the countless hours you put into our project and trying to resolve this situation among the neighbors. Thank you. And that's it for us, right?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Okay, so here we go into the routine and other matters, part of the nightly agenda. So Commissioner reports. So I guess I will start unless somebody has a meeting prior to January eighteen. I don't think there is anybody. There was a meeting prior to that. But who is on board for reporting the last council meeting? Okay, all right, so a particular note, which I think I'll let Adam respond to more, was the public hearing for a possible adoption of the urgency ordinance establishing regulations for subdivision and development of of Senate Bill nine projects and further titling, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But this was, this is something that Adam has worked on and anything I say will be lacking in his authority. But but the other part thing that was discussed was the advertisement for bidding of the town hall project. And that's quite a uh oh, excuse me, the lights went out. It's ten o'clock. Excuse me. So RJ was on board for disclosing how the town is going about the advertising of bids. And the council asked appropriate questions about what they thought it might be. And RJ declined to put himself into a spot where he thought he might say what the town hall would cost. And then he was asked, what if the bids are higher? And he said, well, then we'll have to look at possibly trimming some of the building program or finding another source of funding for those overages and so forth. But so I'd ask you, Adam, is that now officially published?
No, it it hasn't yet. We're still waiting for the final specs to to be able to do that, so. Has not gone out to to be published yet.
So would you mind being the authority on Senate Bill nine?
Yeah, sure. And and to Anne's credit, she's also been a big part of that drafting of that urgency ordinance as well. But but essentially essentially, the urgency ordinance puts into affect some procedures and application requirements and standards for both splitting lots, which is really, if you it's helpful to think of this as a two part process or two, two part, like a two different steps. And they're sequential, but the first part is an urban lot split, which is a, you know, splitting, subdividing a single family parcel lot into two. And so the urgency ordinance has set up processes for that and procedures for review and submittal requirements. And and then incorporated state law requirements regarding, you know, lot sizes and so forth. And then and and we're currently actually reviewing five applications under under that urgency ordinance at this time. And then the second part is development potentially under SB nine regulations as well, which is not only would be governed by the objective development and design standards that the commission knows about in terms of requiring certain form and function, or so should say, certain form and development standards and landscaping requirements, lighting, things like that. Those are all in our current objective design and development standards, but what also we added some additional standards for height limitations, sixteen feet, thousand square foot maximum per unit that would be developed per SB nine and things of that nature, which are somewhat similar to the accessory dwelling unit regulations. And in any case, those are were codified in that urgency ordinance. Important to note, much like accessory dwelling units, if any of those stand, if any of those standards preclude the development, they cannot preclude the development of units of at least eight hundred square feet in size. So even though we're putting all these standards in place, there's always that caveat that you can't deny one of these units at least being eight hundred square feet in size, as long as it's four feet from the rear and side yards up back. So anyways, that those are in place. It's a temporary measure right now. It's first urgency ordinance goes forty five days. And so we're going to go back to the town council likely at the March first meeting and have the town council consider extending that for an additional period of time. And really to allow us to develop more permanent regulations and permanent zoning ordinance or requirements for planning commission review, town council review and additional public outreach as well and comment to get input. input on, on sort of those, uh, standards that we should be adopting on a more permanent basis. So, um, yeah, it's a, it's, it's not the last you're gonna hear about SB nine and these projects, but, um, uh, that's where we stand, uh, currently on that.
Yeah, and there were some comment that night of, from people who, on both sides of the fence, some people who were upset about it and some people who were utilizing it to get fair value out of their property.
Yeah.
So, um, it was interesting discussion. Um, and you're not gonna take up a wildlife, uh, protection ordinance like the town of Woodside.
Yeah.
You could find a mountain lion.
Again, I don't know that mountain lions are common in Cordero Madera. Perhaps a nice tiger would work.
Well, Ford Green said he saw one, so I don't know.
I will, I will say one of the things that we did add also to the urgency ordinance that we're gonna be exploring further with, um, uh, and maybe the, the first, I'd like to think it's the first of its kind, but we did, um, require that if you're in the wooie, and this was developed along with the, the fire department, and you, um, are building one of these units, uh, within the side or rear setbacks, uh, then any portion of of fence, a property line fence that is within ten feet of that structure must be replaced with non-combustible material. Um, as more and more research is showing that you need ten feet of a zone around a structure of, that cannot be flammable for embers or things like that, um, to really have a an ember-free or flammable zone around the structure. So, you know, in, in a sense, it also gives us an opportunity to, uh, experiment a little bit with the temporary ordinance like this.
Adam, do you have anything else you want to report on?
Uh, we have a lot going on. I will just say, uh, tomorrow night's our fifth workshop for the housing element workshop series. Um, we're trying to solidify really our, um, strategy to meet, uh, the regional housing needs allocation, the RENA, um, and that will involve solidifying the sites that we're sort of selecting for housing opportunity sites and also the, the zoning, the, the densities, the housing densities that, um, each of these sites would be rezoned to allow. Um, and so that's tomorrow night. Um, and then that's the, the, exactly what we'll be discussing at the joint planning and town council meeting next Tuesday night, the special meeting that I believe all of you said that you could, were available to make. Although Commissioner Bendel, did you respond to that?
I, I didn't get a notice of it.
Okay, uh, I apologize. That would be why you didn't respond, but I, I, I sent, I tried to, I think I just sent it to the planning commission email list. I will send it right away. Are you, or I'll ask you right now. Hopefully you're, you are, are going to be able to be available on February fifteenth at five PM. But, um, let me send you the.
You know, to tell you the truth, Adam, I'm I, Tuesday is a court day for me.
Okay.
Depends how long the calendar is.
Okay. Let me see. It's, it's, it's a work, it's, it, it's not a decision-making meeting. It's really a, a workshop for the town council and the planning commission to provide comments, uh, to staff regarding this strategy before we go into an environmental analysis and drafting the housing element for public review. Um, let me, let me send it to you.
Are you sure it was five?
Is it five thirty?
I thought it was later than five.
Um, all right, I, I sent it on, uh, January twenty-sixth. I'm sorry. You're in there, but let me send it again.
I will say that, um, there's been a lot of, uh, awareness from people from other communities. Your public outreach has worked. Um, people from
To hear.
Other towns. I can't tell you how many people have come up to me and said, what are you gonna do about seven hundred homes?
Yeah, and I think, um, yeah, well, you know, we're gonna show, um, you know, we've had pretty good response from our, at our workshops, um, and I think we're, we're sort of showing at least a thoughtful approach and, and of course, there's concerns about other mostly infrastructure, um, you know, more of a comprehensive planning nature needs to be taken and to traffic and flooding and um, uh, water as well. And so those things, we're gonna talk about tomorrow night and how we obviously we'll also need to be addressing those as not just a housing plan, but it, those other things are taken into account as well. Let's see.
Okay.
So other than that, um, no, we, the hotel will also be on the agenda February fifteenth for the town council. So that will be at their regular meeting at six thirty.
Phyllis, did you have your hand up for some reason?
Oh, I was gonna make suggestion to Adam, after which you said that people are recognizing what we're doing. I don't know if you put out the press releases for this, or Mike Mararty is the one who puts it together. Cause I know
I don't think we've done press releases in quarter.
Well, no, they go out to the IG. I know they do. And I was gonna suggest sending one out because they just did an editorial praising the county for coming up with some places to use and how wonderful it is they put on their website so people can comment. And look at all the steps we've been going through in Cordero Madera, and I'd like to see something go out talking about how Cordero Madera is addressing this. Whether it's a guest editorial or whatever, somebody ought to write it and get us some good publicity in the paper.
Well, let's, let's first, maybe after, uh, next Tuesday, if we hear that we're actually going in the right direction with what we're doing.
No, keep that in mind because this has been a very unique process, the steps that have been taken. It's something I think we should be proud of.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think our consultants have said as much as well that they're seeing us, uh, sort of leading, um, sort of a unique path, um, here and, and sort of, um, anyways. All right, so that's, yeah, that's, that's sort of it for the moment. Um,
Do you have anything on the agenda for the twenty-second or?
No, we don't actually at the moment. So.
Maybe we can discuss the, uh, the Airbnb issue.
Um, we are going to, um, do that, but first, um, I think we have a, I have a scope. Uh, we have some preliminary sort of uh, findings more just based on, uh, research, uh, from our consultant, but I think the next step was actually gonna be presenting that at a public workshop. I mean, we, we could propose that at a planning commission workshop or just a general workshop, but but we're not gonna be ready to do that in two weeks, that's for sure. Just way too, too much, uh, other items to be on our plate at the moment. Um, but I certainly, that is, that is, uh, fairly soon we'll be ready to do that. And just deciding whether to take that to a public workshop for, you know, like we're doing with the housing element to open it up, or whether that's at a planning commission meeting. But certainly we'll come back to the planning commission no mu- no matter what, um, but it might be helpful to bring public comment to the planning commission from a more broad, broadly advertised sort of, uh, discussion.
And, and Adam, uh, or two meetings in a row now, we come up against the issue of somebody constructing something illegally.
Yep.
And so I, uh, I'd kind of like to know a little more about the process that the planning department goes through, uh, in discovering this and what research they do about it, what the repercussions are, what the, um,
Okay.
what the town does about enforcing it.
Yeah, I could bring in our code enforcement division at some point and to do that, to talk about, um, uh, all the, the code enforcement work that they do. And certainly, um, how, um, yeah, we're, we're, you know, how we're addressing those, those issues, which happen quite frequently.
And also how other towns address the issues to make sure we're not too lenient because we tend to be too many times.
I think we should do public flogging.
Well, I, I, the reader, the reader, the reader board. The, I, the reader board has, does have many eyes on it. I don't know.
Mr. Rizzo, would you want to comment on, uh, your last town council, uh, meeting? You're unmuted, yeah.
I said, um, I'm sure that we can do a, a really big, um, HD, uh, TV right there by the, by the, um, community center to shame people when they, when they fail or fail to get permits. Um, now, you know, our, uh, the town council meeting that I, um, attended was, uh, primarily, um, business items. Um, we did have a presentation from Parks and Rec from Ashley and, uh, who did a great job. And if you're really interested in, in the presentation, I'd, I'd take a look at the video. There's a lot to, a lot of information that she had given out and, um, but other than that, there was just a, a lot of, uh, information uh, regarding budgets. Um, I think the biggest discussion was the keys to the tennis court. So, not too much, uh, that, that was kind of came across our plate and ended up in the town council, um, to vote on, so. We have a lot to report out.
Okay. And just to confirm, it is, it, it is scheduled for five PM, the joint planning commission town council meeting at this point. Five to six.
What time?
Send the Zoom link or how is that gonna work?
Yes, yes. Uh, Rebecca, this will probably come from Ta- Rebecca Vaughn, town clerk, because it's a joint meeting. And, uh, uh, yeah, it, it will, it will be. We haven't had one of these in a while and, and there's, I know there's also been discussion of having one not just focused on the housing element, but more broadly sort of just having a check-in as a town council and planning commission, but that might be a little bit later.
We used to do that once a year and last time we did it, uh, Sloane Bailey was mayor.
Yeah.
I wanted to just say thank you to Anne for the, um, I, I think, I think the, what you added to the meeting today, especially giving the youngs a, a chance to talk at the end. I think that was really important and I appreciated it for the sake of uh, everybody getting, you know, fair access.
I, I have to be completely honest. Uh, Adam and I had kind of an offline conversation about this. Um, and after some consideration, I agreed with him that it was a good idea. Uh, I, I was wondering if we should do it, but Adam was really the one who pushed it. I, I, I think it was important. And I appreciate it.
I agree.
Well, thank you.
And thank you, Adam.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, Anne agreed, so that was his joint, joint decision.
I was just sitting there thinking, do I interrupt them? Should I, you know? Because it is so unusual, that kind of back and forth after public comment is closed.
It is, and it, it was a little more than usual, but it was appropriate. It's great.
Yeah. Thanks, Peter.
I have to, uh, go study, uh, conflict resolution.
No, you guys do really well. Yeah. It's not easy. All right.
So I think that's all we have for the night.
What about the minutes?
Oh, thank you, Phyllis.
Set of minutes need a correction.
Which one?
This second set.
Uh-oh. Those are the ones.
No, it's, uh, it's Julie Kritzberger. It's page in the red numbering. It's page one fifty.
Okay.
Whoever typed it up got Julie Christopher, and it's Kritzberger.
Got it. Yes, that's true. Thank you.
Julie Christopher. Oh, my goodness.
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
We'll make that change.
Change, I would move both sets of minutes.
Do you have a second?
Second. A second. Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
We're done, we're done, right, Peter?
We're done, we're done.
Okay. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, all.